There we go.
We good?
Yes.
Okay.
Paula, I have a motion. This is Chris.
Uh, yes, please, Chris.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the order of the agenda tonight and take executive session first, please.
Okay, do I have a second from the committee?
I'll second that. Eric.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, um, I'll take a roll call, um, and that would be to go into executive session to come out. I'm going to be honest with you, probably no less than one hour from now to come back into regular session, go into executive session for the purposes of Silver Lake Educational Association, Silver Lake Aid Employees Contract Negotiating Discussions pursuant to MGLC 382183, and for the purpose of discussing potential coronavirus budget and other impacts. I'm going to do a roll call. Eric?
Yes.
Ed?
Yep.
Mike?
Yep.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry, folks who have dialed in. Um, we need to go into executive session first. I honestly would say we will not be back in regular session before seven o'clock. So we will see you folks, whoever can dial back in as soon as we are out of executive session. Hi, folks. Thanks for patiently waiting. I am going to, um, call back to order a regular session of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. Um, can I just verify all of my committee members are on? Eric?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike? Okay, give Mike a minute. Gordon?
Yes.
Good. Chris?
Yes, I'm here.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Ed? And Mike, are you on yet? I apologize. Give Mike a minute as he's the only representative from Plimpton at this time. I have to have him in the meeting.
I'm here, Paula.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, folks, um, I'm going to allow a couple of comments for public participation. I'm going to preface this by saying, um, I would like only new comments or feedback. I'd like to not be, um, using our time to reiterate comments from prior meetings. I think it's very important for us to look at and hear about the draft reentry plan tonight and let the committee have a lot of time to discuss that. John, I do see you do have a statement. I'm going to ask you for it to be brief as, as much as possible, and I would allow you to say that statement now.
Yep, understood, and, um, I do believe that a lot of this information is, uh, things that we haven't brought up before. Um, so I, I have spoken many times as committee in the past, so, uh, I do want to have a different voice tonight to speak for SLEA. Jen Chapins is co-chair of our acting committee. She's been working on health and safety issues. Um, so she's going to be delivering tonight's message to us.
Okay, thank you for that, John. Um, I am going to just respond to the next comment and then anything put in the chat, we may or may not get to tonight. Um, there have been no discussions about budget. Budget has to go before town meeting, uh, or decisions about budget. I guess Plimpton is in support of our budget. We, we have a couple more town meetings to go though. Um, any other comments from the public before we turn it over to, well, I'm going to approve minutes and then turn it over to the principal, uh, superintendent?
Is Jen Chapins here to give our statement?
Yes, I am.
Okay, yeah, so we just wanted to have Jen speak on behalf of us if you, if you don't mind.
Okay, very quickly.
Thank you, Paula, and thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the SLEA. We also thank you all for your efforts during this process. We know this is a difficult predicament. That said, regard for the lives of students, families, and staff must be paramount in decisions for reentry. An overwhelming 73% of staff favor a remote start to the school year, a decision that was made with consideration for students, families, and staff. Every one of us wants to return to school to the careers that we love and worked hard to earn. We're also not immune to the hardships that families in our community are experiencing. We too have juggled the difficulties of working from home while caring for children and family members. Additionally, 40% of Silver Lake staff is either at risk for severe complications from COVID-19 or lives with someone who is. Equally concerning is the data that shows that middle and high school aged individuals transmit the virus as efficiently as adults. We implore you to vote for the safest plan at this time, which is beginning the school year remotely. It is imprudent to commit to a reentry plan that is incomplete. Many important questions remain unanswered. What is the cleaning protocol for rooms in between class periods? Does every classroom and office space have effective ventilation and/or working windows? More work needs to be done. A vote to open remotely allows for the opportunity to focus energies on a more organized and robust learning curriculum and allows the district the time needed to prepare for a truly safe phased reentry process. A vote to open remotely drastically lessens the immediate health risks for students, families, and staff. A vote to open remotely now increases the chances that when we do reopen, we can remain open. So we ask you to vote for a remote start to the school year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that statement. Sorry about that. I lost my mic. Um, thank you for that. If you didn't hear me, thank you for that before. Uh, somebody put a question in the chat already about CTE students. We are not going to answer any specific questions like that at this time during this meeting. We are going to allow the superintendent and the assistant superintendent and the principals to speak to the plan. We are going to allow the school committee a robust discussion about the plan, and then if we don't answer questions and we have time, we will take some questions. That's the way tonight is going to work. Having said that, um, I'm going to ask everybody to keep their mics on mute, please, um, so that there's less feedback during the discussion tonight. Before I turn it over to the superintendent, um, can I get from my committee, uh, the review of the minutes for tonight and a motion to approve, please?
Show a move.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Leslie Ann, are you approving both sec, um, minutes that were both dates?
Yes, ma'am.
Paula, I have a question before we vote. An amendment, I guess.
Okay.
Um, on the second page of the July 9th, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, um, it says that you took over the meeting and asked for nomination for vice chair, but then it says that I nominated Mrs. Hatch as a chair. I think it was supposed to be the nomination of me as a vice chair, so it looks incorrect.
Okay.
So I'd ask, and I don't remember what the vote was. I don't know if anyone voted no.
Yeah.
I thought you did. I might have.
I know, really. Okay, so the motion would be with the amendment Eric shared with us.
Correct.
And it's been seconded? Okay, I need a roll call. Eric?
Yes.
Uh, Ed?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
And myself is a yes on the minutes as well. Thank you. With that said, um, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our superintendent so that Jill can begin, um, briefing us on the updated reentry plans.
Thank you. I'm going to begin by first, um, attempting to present the presentation visually for you. Um, Madam Chair, if you could let me know when you are able to see
Still waiting, Jill, just to let you know. Excellent, Jill. We have it. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, good evening. At our last meeting, we reviewed three potential models for the start of school. To date, no decision has been made with regards to how we will open school. Our school committee must approve a comprehensive plan with how it intends to open school by August 10th. This plan will still be subject to approval by the state and still subject to bargaining with our unions. To help inform this decision, we are required to develop and pressure test three learning models: an in-person learning, hybrid, and remote learning. And ideally, we would be able to, to transition between these three models relatively seamlessly at any point since we do not know the realities or issues that we may confront regarding this virus. Before I talk about the, the comprehensive plan, uh, I had, was asked to, um, survey parents and, uh, ask them to consider committing to either remote or transportation needs at this time. We received a number of concerns from, from parents as anticipated, that it was difficult for them to select a plan without a vote on a comprehensive plan, and that is understandable. Nonetheless, uh, we had several committee members who felt it was important to get a sense of where people were at this time because when I delivered the presentation regarding in-person, hybrid, and remote, some of the concerns centered around the number of students that we would need to service, whether it be remote or in transportation, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But before we do that, we're going to first review the, the survey data that was collected as of today. So, in this first presentation, and I know that there's a lot here, uh, but this is an overall survey, um, from the different districts. There were 2,010 responses, 1,562 non-responses. Um, that's about a 56% response rate. So we're looking at only half of our, you know, a little over half of our, um, our potential survey respondents participating at this time. We have 48.9% of our parents preferring, um, sorry, I don't want to misread this, full in-person learning with three feet physical distance, and then 51% the other half, a little over half, preferring either full remote or six feet social distancing, at 36.4% for hybrid and 14.6% for remote learning. When we, and this, and that particular survey was merely a survey response, the next two responses, we were asking parents to make a commitment as to whether or not they would require transportation. Please recognize that as a regional school district, we must provide transportation to our students. We share our buses with our elementary schools, and we receive partial reimbursement for our transportation. So we are legally obligated to provide transportation for all students that need transportation. We did have, um, 51.8% stating that they would provide transportation for their, their child across the districts. Now, this is not just Silver Lake. This is all of our, um, all of our towns combined. Um, some of our respondents, 11.2% said they didn't need transportation because they planned for their child to learn remotely, and 37% said that they would need their child to take the bus. When we asked them if they were ready to commit to full remote learning, 15.2% said yes. This is, again, across all of our schools. Sorry, I'm not able to advance without my mouse. So this next slide represents just the middle and high school respondents. There are 899 responses, 727 non-responses, for a total of 1,626 responses, or about 55% response rate. And here you can see 45.6 are in favor of a full in-person learning with three feet physical distancing, 14% at full remote, and a little over 40% preferring six feet social distancing. If we look at the bus commitments for Silver Lake students alone, the 56.2 would be able to provide transportation or their child would be able to, um, get to school, whether by driving or walking or biking. A little over 33% said yes, their child would take the bus, and 10.2% said that they didn't need transportation because they intended for their child to learn remotely. When we asked people whether or not they were ready to commit to full remote learning, 13.3% said yes, that they would be interested in a full remote learning plan for their child. So we wanted to give you those numbers because we did, um, as requested, and we, we put out that, that process to help inform your decisions this evening. Schools are required to follow the two-step process for submitting district reopening plans. We did complete our preliminary reopening plan summary, which was due on July 31st. Step two is the submission of a final district reopening plan, which is, uh, which needs to be approved by August 10th. And, uh, the Department of Education also notes that we must meet the final health and safety requirements in order to, um, begin our, or for our plan to be approved. So just a little summary of what we presented the other evening. Um, we have summarized for you some of the pros and cons of each of the models, and we recognize that none of the models are ideal and that all of us would love to return to a day before COVID-19, uh, but that is out of our hands, and so we must deal with what we do know, and there are strengths and weaknesses to each of these plans. For in-person, we would be able to have the highest number of our students be able to return to in-person face-to-face instruction at three feet and at six feet where possible. We have had our principals do a pressure test, and we know that with all of our students returning, we would not be able to guarantee six feet distancing if we went to all-in-person model. A typical school day is the best standard for teaching and learning, and, uh, we know that there's no replacement for that face-to-face learning that takes place between teacher and student. The weaknesses of this, um, model would be that three feet distances meet all of the Department of Education guidelines, but it is less than the current CDC guidance. It would also increase our bus route needs significantly. In the last presentation, I explained how the current bus capacity under the minimum DESI guidance would be, um, the three feet social distancing on the bus, which would make our buses about one-third the capacity. In order to transport our students, this would be costly. Um, not all of our staff can return to school to serve students in person, and arrivals and lunches would present a particular, uh, difficult spacing issue because while we could accommodate students at three feet distancing, it would mean that, uh, we would have issues with regards to lunches and six feet distancing and our arrivals, and we've talked about the need for, uh, perhaps staggered start times, um, and larger arrival and departure windows for our students. The hybrid model, which I recommended last, uh, during our last meeting, um, some of the benefits of this model is that it would allow for six feet, six-foot spacing. It meets the CDC recommended guidelines. Students would attend school in person and remotely so that learning is continuous. We would be able to transport students using the current routes with some additional cost, potentially some additional cost. We don't know that for certain just yet. And, uh, the things that, uh, the weaknesses of that, this model is that we recognize that the hybrid model is disruptive for our families and childcare. Scheduling cohorts of students, um, for learning add potential burden to families. So one of the things that we have done in each of our presentations has stressed the need for our models to be consistent across our schools because we do have family members with children in more than one of our schools. So we'd like our, our families to be able to attend school on the same day to help, um, ease some of that burden. A typical school operational day is the best standard for teaching and learning, and again, we can't provide that in the hybrid model. A remote learning model is the safest model possible from a COVID medical perspective. It provides parents with a known structured schedule for childcare planning, as does the hybrid model. The difficulties with this model is that it's not as effective as in-person learning, and we've heard time and time again of the difficulties faced by numbers of our students who are isolated, um, who are suffering socially, emotionally, mentally. School provides a safe place for many of our students, and remote learning is disruptive for families and childcare. In weighing all this, it was why I recommended the hybrid model during our last meeting. We would be able to maintain six feet social distancing for students and staff, which presents less potential exposure than three feet. We would maintain or be able to maintain three feet distancing on the bus. Three feet distancing in school will require additional busing and costs because we cannot guarantee enough drivers or funding for additional routes. We cannot deny bus transportation. Multiple runs may not be feasible due to the length of time required for each run. Currently, and again, this obviously would change based on the number of students and number of stops, um, but our current runs last about an hour. So eight runs would equal eight hours. That would be two AM runs and two PM runs, and an extended school day would need to be negotiated. We've asked our principals to create schedules where core requirements, student priorities, would be placed in person to the greatest extent possible. The hybrid model would allow us to maintain social emotional connections. It would allow us to provide live daily instruction, whether in person or remote, and it helps us to maintain a variety of disciplines and interests for our students. These are the reasons why I have recommended the hybrid model. With regards to the plan, it includes a letter from me. This is a draft. It must include the district selection for the reopening model it will use to begin the school year. The draft will need to be changed depending upon how the school committee votes this evening. It contains the principles that helped guide us through this process, namely the safety of our students and staff and maintaining the highest quality of an educational program possible. We recognize that although we sent commitment forms to families and some families were ready to make that commitment, uh, we recognize that we're going to need to extend that deadline because some of our parents opted to wait until they knew exactly what our plan was. Tonight, uh, I will be asking you to consider, uh, a revised calendar in light of the commissioner's notice that he has agreed to, um, allow us to use up to 10 days training prior to the start of school, as long as we start school no later than September 16th, and this, these days would be, allow us to help with safety training and preparations with our staff. It includes the health and safety requirements for in-person learning, including a reference sheet, and I've linked it here to this presentation for your reference. The plan also includes summaries of each model. We, please recall that regardless of how we open the school year, we need to be able to transition between these models at any point, and so it's important for us to have developed each of these models because we don't know at what point we may need to change. I'm going to turn it over now to Assistant Superintendent Lynch, who will give you some more details within the plan.
Thank you, Jill. Just to keep people informed, the, the comprehensive reopening plan is 35 pages. That includes, uh, new health and safety guidance for, um, in-person learning, so that would mean, um, any student that would attend as part of, and staff member that would attend as part of the hybrid model, um, or the full in-person. So I just wanted to review these highlights for the information of, um, everybody who's listening. So masks or face coverings are required in grade two and above. They're also recommended for PKK in grade one. DESI guidance, um, explains that adults, including educators and staff, are required to wear masks, um, or face coverings, and exceptions can be made, um, due to medical conditions, disabilities, or other health and safety factors. Um, our schools have purchased additional supplies of masks in case adults or students need them, but for students, masks should be provided, um, by families. On the bus, all students, um, must wear a mask, and, um, transparent masks can help younger students deaf and hard of hearing and their teachers. Um, as part of the school day, of course, mask breaks are encouraged. There's been some, um, helpful, uh, thinking and research, uh, shared through DESI by groups like the Parabola Project, which helps teachers think about, um, developing sort of a mask culture at middle and high school levels and think about, um, teaching students why masks are important part of, um, health and safety during a pandemic. On buses, um, social distancing starts and mask wearing at the bus stop, and so everyone on the bus and at the stop has to wear a mask that covers the nose and mouth at all times. As Jill mentioned, um, in order to keep people as safe as possible on the bus, a, a minimum of three feet social distancing is identified. So that means, um, one student per bench on a bus unless they're from the same household, and, um, as COVID is a respiratory, um, virus, there's lots of guidance about ventilation and, um, trying to maximize fresh air, and on buses, that would mean, um, buses are encouraged to have windows and roof hatches open even during colder weather months. DESI provides guidance that would say windows should be down, uh, several inches to provide, um, to provide fresh air. On the next slide, there's some information about some changes in classrooms. Um, DESI's guidance states that, um, for their recommendations for in-person learning says there should be six feet of distancing from seat edge to seat edge where possible, and then they say, but no closer, uh, six feet where possible, but no closer than three feet. So that's for their, the full in-person model. I would just identify that when Jill talked about the recommendation for the hybrid model, that would allow us to maintain the six feet of, um, social distancing. DESI guidance would enable, um, a district to go to three feet. Um, our plan includes, uh, six. Uh, teachers, um, are encouraged as part of the new guidance, um, as much as possible, and staff to, to try to keep cohorts of students, uh, together and materials associated with the same students. We recognize, um, that at different levels of education, it can be, um, more challenging, but to any extent possible, that's what advise, is advised in the DESI guidance. So that means that, um, with passing time, we have to make adjustments in both schools to, um, how students travel. That would include new travel patterns in hallways, different passing times, improved signage, uh, to make sure that our students and staff can learn about these changes, and, um, to the extent possible, um, during lunch, students would need to stay with, within a cohort, and as a reminder, there's, at lunch, there's absolutely no variance on the six-foot rule because obviously people eat without masks on, so, um, there can't, there has to absolutely be six feet, um, at lunch. There's some comprehensive guidance as well, uh, on improving safety through the facilities. So cleaning and disinfecting in our schools would occur at least twice available daily for shared spaces and furniture, high-touch surfaces more frequently. Our new facilities director has, um, acquired hospital-grade electrostatic sprayers for all of our, uh, schools, and we now have them on hand, including, um, the disinfectant and protective gear for, um, our custodians so that they are protected, um, when, uh, cleaning occurs. Changes would need to be made, uh, in, in line with recommendations, uh, from DESI to increase air filtration, so with unit ventilators and, and things like that, they would be shifted so that recirculated air is minimized and as much outdoor air as possible is, um, brought into the, uh, to the system. to the system. DESI advises us that indoor spaces without windows or adequate HVAC will not be used for classroom spaces. So we will not use classrooms that do not have windows. And Matt Durkey, our facilities director, has developed a list of all those spaces within the district that don't meet those guidelines. Sorry, Jill, you're on mute if you just wanted to, just so everyone can hear it.
Thank you, sorry. So our next steps, student and staff commitment and assignments will be critical in terms of making those commitments so that our principals can begin assigning students and staff to whatever model that we are going to be starting the school year in. The step would need, I'm sorry, the plan would need to be approved by the state and it would still be subject to bargaining. And our principals need to begin creating and building level operational plans. This would include things such as arrival and dismissal procedures, classroom configuration and physical distancing, how meals will be distributed for students, where students will eat. This may also include facility configuration changes. We would also need to take steps for safety measures, including cleaning and disinfecting and educating. So also included in the plan are sample schedules. And Principal Gill will begin with her high school sample schedules.
Thank you, Jill. Do you want me to present from my screen? Would that be easier for changing slides?
If you'd like to.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, great, thank you. So as you know, the state has asked us to submit three plans, a full in-person, a hybrid, and a fully remote. Each of these plans requires a different type of student schedule that must also be able to transition from one type of learning scenario to the next. So I'm sure you can all appreciate the complexity of this task as I share what our 2020, 2021 school year could potentially look like. So looking at this slide now, if we were safely able to all return to the building, we can run our traditional seven-day rotating schedule. Students would take seven classes. They would attend six per day and we would provide a full offering of our courses based on student requests, just as we would in a typical school year. On the next slide, just to give you a sample of what that would look like for both a non-CTE student and a CTE student. A student could enroll in all four core classes, take wellness and two additional electives, or possibly a world language or resource class. Or if they're in the CTE program, they would enroll in all four core classes and then take their three shop classes as well. Some considerations for the school committee when looking at a potential full in-person return. Until all social distancing guidelines have been lifted, strict safety measures must be in place for a full return. These would include staggered passing times, one-directional halls and stairwells, hand washing and hand sanitizing. We would use e-hall pass to monitor the number of students in the hall or the restrooms, wearing masks and placing desks three feet apart, six feet when possible, and of course, routine cleaning and disinfecting practices by our custodial staff. We can convert from hybrid to full in-person with two to three weeks' notice in order to rebuild and reassign teaching assignments. In a hybrid, we would have to stack our core classes, periods one through five, and our electives, periods six through seven, which you'll see here in a couple of slides. And we wouldn't be able to accommodate that schedule in the building. So we request to make the transition at a term or semester so that we would be able to close out grades. Lunch would have to be a grab-and-go for those who buy. It would be held in the cafeteria and gymnasium, which certainly impacts scheduling and availability of space. But it would be necessary in order to maintain students at least six feet apart. Electives such as art, music, and wellness, if we were to be in-person fully, would have to run under the new guidelines presented by DESI. So they certainly wouldn't look or feel the way that they have in the past. But we could make some changes there. I believe there's no online coverage transportation concern, so I won't go into that. When a hybrid schedule, one of the biggest obstacles is balancing both staff and students on a part-time basis, be it in the building or remote. So we can't run our typical seven-day schedule because our students and staff, as you know, can't be in two places at once. So as a team, we've been working to create a hybrid model that would prioritize core classes, CTE, AP, world language, or special education for in-person instruction, and allows our electives and wellness to be completed remotely. So students would fall into cohorts with a mirrored schedule. So what you're looking at here now is cohort A. If I'm a student in cohort A, I'm going to attend school in-person on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then I'm going to attend school virtually on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. If I'm in cohort B, it's the reverse. So I'm going to attend classes remotely from home on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then I would go to the school building and attend in-person on Thursday and Friday. So classes on my remote day, so Thursday, Friday, if I'm in cohort B, Monday, Tuesday, if I'm in cohort A, excuse me, I have that backwards. But classes on your remote day are both synchronous and asynchronous. So an example of that on the next slide. In cohort A, I would attend my core classes and I would take, here I am, here I'm taking, for example, Spanish with my core classes on Monday and Tuesday. On Thursday and Friday, I would attend my elective classes synchronously. And then I would be synchronously on my core classes. Wednesday would have synchronous learning for all classes. We could also, in this model, offer a smart block, a support block, excuse me, on the remote days, where administrators, counselors, bed liaisons, coaches, paraprofessionals, and other staff could help provide both SEL and academic support to students. For a CTE student in this model, we could offer, again, some core classes remotely so that we can get them in the building for shops, that shop can be in-person. The CTE-related class, as well as any electives, and then two other core classes would then be remote in that scenario. Some considerations for this model. I want to point out that it prioritizes our high-need students, as defined by DESI, for in-person learning. We would try to prioritize our core subject areas, world language, resource, some AP programs, and CTE for in-person instruction. I have these bullets on the next slide. Student passing time would still need to be staggered. Hallway stairs would still need to be one-directional. We would still need to use e-hall pass. And students in cohorts A and B would attend in-person for five classes. And then they would have two synchronous virtual classes, as well as asynchronous learning on their remote days. This assumes that students in cohort C are attending classes remotely and that those in cohort D will have the option to attend in-person more days per the week. And we would follow the same guidelines as in-person with grab-and-go lunches, seating students six feet apart, again, using the cafeteria and the gym, which, again, impacts scheduling and room availability. In this scenario, wellness, art, music, and most of our electives would have to be offered remotely. A student's schedule, if we converted to full in-person from this model, their classes may not necessarily change, but their teacher assignments could. Because in order to revert back to our seven-period schedule, we can no longer stack core classes, periods one through five. We would have to more evenly distribute them. So it is important to note that our hybrid schedule is limiting in what we can offer. We would have to prioritize student requests and grad requirements with our staffing availability and keep our scheduling restraints in mind. All right, so for our remote scenarios, I have two scenarios to share. The first transitions very easily with the hybrid model that I just proposed. In this model, we keep the same bell schedule as in the hybrid, but our previously scheduled in-person days would now take place remotely. So it's the exact same bell schedule, if you will. But now cohort A, instead of coming into the building on Mondays and Tuesdays for periods one through five, would attend their classes remotely and synchronously during those times on those days instead. Again, all classes synchronously on Wednesday. And then I would attend periods six and seven synchronously on Thursday and Friday and then have my additional asynchronous learning opportunities on those days. Cohort B, again, we're now just flopping the two. They would attend periods six and seven, plus have their synchronous classes remotely on Monday, Tuesday, all classes on Wednesday. And then periods one through five, instead of going into the building, they would now take those classes remotely from home. The same limitations in the hybrid exist in this fully remote model in terms of restraints, limits of what we can run. But it requires no changes to move back to in-person hybrid when it is safe to do so. Lastly, I'd like to share one other fully remote option that the school committee may consider. This is looking at starting the year remotely for a long-term consideration or in the event that the state closes schools indefinitely. This model would allow us to run all of our course offerings as if we were fully in the building, but to do it synchronously from home through remote learning instead. It would convert back to our in-person seven-day schedule without any changes to a student's schedule. But it does not convert to a hybrid schedule without significant changes to both a student and staff's schedule. So this would be the preferred model for starting remote with the intention of a full in-person return when it is safe to do so. So some considerations, obviously, with full remote. You know, there would be a mix of both synchronous and asynchronous learning for the student. The hybrid model that I shared where students take some classes Monday, Tuesday, and others Thursday, Friday, there is great flexibility to move to and from full remote to hybrid at a moment's notice. You know, we wouldn't need a whole lot of time depending on, you know, the information that we're getting from the state to transition from one to the other. The second model that I shared is more long-term if we're looking to have an indefinite amount of time that we would be remote.
Now I'd ask Mr. DePiel to share his middle school samples.
Yep, so okay, good. So in designing the middle school schedule, obviously, a lot of the information that I'll touch on, but I'll try to touch on some of it a little more quickly so that I'm not repeating the safety protocols that Michaela had voiced, but I will review those. So in my design, you know, my first goal always is student safety. So if you think about it as like the reverse of six degrees of separation, how do I make sure that I keep the cohorts and the student groupings, in a sense, moving together but not interacting with the other 500 students in the building? So when we go through the student's schedule, I'll talk through that a little bit so you can understand how we're narrowing down those groupings and limiting any interactions across the building. So if we look at the in-person schedule, we're going to run in-person our eight-period schedule, 49 minutes. And four lunches with
I'm sorry, Jim, I've lost the page on you.
Okay.
You want this page?
Well, back one.
Back one?
That's it, thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, no, no worries. So we'll run our normal eight-period schedule that everyone's familiar with if we go fully in-person. Obviously, the differences will be how we group our students, how we move our students, and the safety protocols that are in place. So within the teams, I would separate the students within four groups within each team. And then those groups would move only on the team. And the elective teachers would come to the team. And again, it's to keep the students on that team and to keep that space and their interactions only on that team. I would also look at staggering times for each team. So in essence, I'd be running six different schedules within our school. So it'd be six schools within a school that all run their own independent schedules with their own staggered times within the five-person team. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when we hit the student's schedule. There'd also be one entrance and one exit for each team. So only the students that are going on that team would go in and out of that exit. Obviously, hand washing, sanitizing, e-hall pass, masks, and desks would be three feet apart, which Michaela had talked about as well. And again, each student will remain on-team throughout the day and off-teachers would come to that team and teach in those classrooms. If I could have the next one, Jill? So student schedules in-person. So one of the things that we've also talked about is if we start one way, can we move to a different student's schedule? Can we go from in-person to a hybrid schedule or hybrid to a distance learning schedule? And obviously, we can. We can do those things. Hybrid to full in-person would just, you know, take a little bit of planning because we would want to make some adjustments in our master's schedule and our teaching assignments to do that. But again, and as Ryan has mentioned, you know, there's time for us. If we go from a hybrid schedule back to in-person, you know, because, you know, that they have COVID is no longer the same concern and we can do that, we'll have some time for planning in that regards. And as we've talked about, lunch would be held in the cafeteria in the gymnasium with students at six feet apart. Electives, art, music, wellness will run under the new guidelines by DESI. Move on to the next one. So the daily rotation. So our daily rotation for fully in-person or fully remote would be our eight-period day. The times are the same, the eight periods are the same, the core subjects obviously are the same. And the rounds are primarily the same. And the electives, most of the electives are the same as they are and have been in the past years. The things that we had to do, or I had to do to make some adjustments, were the singleton electives. So I had to refrain from using some of the singleton electives and move more towards electives that could draw in all students from the team. And again, the reason why we do that is if I had a singleton class, that draws students from across the whole grade into that singleton class. And I can't keep that degree of separation that we're looking for in the DESI guidance. So I have to have something that the electives can go to the team, stay on the team, that all students can be incorporated into. So if you look at the fully in-person, the eight-period schedule, for instance, you would have first period would be electives, a music elective opposite, like a wellness guidance elective, and it would run AB. And that is the same that we do currently. We have music that runs AB opposite wellness currently in our schedule. Then you can see periods two, three, and four are some of our core classes, science, math, ELA. Then for seventh grade, you would run our lunch SSR. And then period six, we would have our rounds classes, which again is similar to what we currently do. We would have our rounds classes, period six, period seven, social studies. And then period eight would be the second elective for students. And that would, and it would act as a rounds. And it would be art, problem and statistics, automation and robotics, and health. And again, if you look, you'll see there's four elective teachers on those two elective periods. And that's because I've broken, again, I've broken the teams down to four groupings. So four elective teachers would go to the team and they would take care of the four groupings that are on each team. So what I would do is the four elective teachers, like you see in period one, period one, they would go to one seventh-grade team. Period two, they would move to the other seventh-grade team. And then period three, those four elective teachers would move to the third team. And as they're doing that, the team teachers would have their prep period during that time. So that's how that would function. Eighth grade, I mean, fully remote for seventh grade, be very similar. In fact, it's the exact same schedule, same classes. So if we were fully in-person or fully remote, we would run a very similar schedule as we currently run now, again, just minus some of the electives. Eighth grade, again, same, just some of the electives changed. So instead of like art one, you have art two for the eighth grade. Instead of problem stats, you have geometry for the eighth grade. And then, so then you would have science for innovators, that's a computer science for innovators. That's an eighth-grade elective. So it would run very similar. They would have a period of electives. Then you would have your core classes, science, math, ELA. Period five, you would have your rounds classes on the team. Period six, you would have your lunch SSR for eighth grade. Seven, social studies. And eight, one difference in the eighth grade is we offer world language in the eighth grade. So you would have your world language classes, your music electives, and wellness elective. And if we went to fully remote, it would be the same schedule as fully in-person. So if we go to the next schedule, the next So if we go to the next schedule, the next slide I'm in. So things, just, I'm going to quickly touch on things that aren't changed from what we've been doing for the past 10 years. We keep our teams with our four core teachers, ELA, math, science, social studies, and our special education teacher and our paraprofessional. And students would be placed on teams. We would have an eight-period day schedule, would have 49-minute periods, would have rounds on-team, music and wellness be run A-B. Off-team teachers, which would be an adjustment, they would come to the team instead of teaching in their classrooms. And again, we made all efforts to keep students in small groups and to move as a cohort to lower the risk of COVID. Okay, some of the things that changed, which I kind of mentioned, singleton electives were removed to keep students in small cohorts, keep groupings consistent, needed electives that could serve everyone on the team. An example of some of the electives that would, that would probably be removed would be jazz band, honors course, Latin, patterns, problems and puzzles, 3D art, origins of language, musical theater, beginning keyboarding, and STEM science. And that could adjust depending on the master's schedule a little bit, but that just gives you a real solid idea. So the hybrid model. So one of the things that, when we move into the hybrid models, we would still keep our teams together with our four core teachers. Students would be placed on teams, they would be separated into two cohorts, and then within the two cohorts, I would still break them down into four smaller groupings. We would move to a five-period schedule. The core subjects of ELA, math, social studies, and science would be taught in-person with longer class periods, and electives would be taught online. We would still stagger start times for passing and for safety. We would still use one entrance for the team and one exit for each team, and we would still be looking at hand washing, sanitizing, e-hall pass, mask, and desks would be six feet apart in the hybrid model. So when we look at the hybrid, the cohort A, B, C, and D, which, you know, I know Michaela's already touched on, but cohort A and B will attend classes in-person two days a week and remotely three days a week. Cohort C will attend classes remotely. And cohort D will attend in-person four days a week and one day remotely. And again, the cohort D would be the students that we want to make sure that we give maximized instruction and attention to, to help them for their educational purposes. And all these models, lunch would be grab-and-go. Lunch would be held again in this model as well, in the cafeteria and gymnasium, with students being six feet apart. Go to the next slide, Jill?
All right, Jim, it's not advancing on me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to use this.
That's fine.
I apologize. I'm not sure why it's getting funny on me.
No worries.
Stop me when you see it.
I think it's, I think it's either your next one or the one after.
It won't advance past slide 34.
Okay. I don't see any slides after this in the one that you sent me in email. That was the last one. Well, the only, really, the last one is the hybrid slide. If you want, Jill, I could show it from my computer.
Yes, I'll stop presenting.
All right.
Have I stopped presenting?
Yes.
It's off the screen, Jill, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just gotta pull mine up. One second. Okay, can you guys see this one? Hold on, I'll make it so that it presents. Can you see the? Can everyone, can someone respond? Let me know if you can see my schedule.
Not yet. No, we can't.
Now, now it's coming up.
Now it's coming?
Yep.
How's that?
Yep, perfect.
Okay, good, good, good. Okay, so this is my hybrid schedule, and like I said, we moved to a five-period day schedule, and within the five periods, you'll see the four core classes which I've talked about, science, math, ELAs in this yellow area, and social studies. And then, in the first period, I'm showing our elective period, wellness, applied science, guidance, and again, teachers would move to the team in this. So this would be, for instance, the five periods that would be in-school would be the in-person, and those would be the five with the core subjects, with the longer periods now. And if we went remote, I mean, when we go remote, I should say, they would have fine arts for two periods, so they'd get two fine arts electives that they would have during their remote time, and again, they're scheduled in. They would also have rounds, which is their problem stats, guidance, and intervention. And then they would have academic support. So if a student needed support for math, or whatever it might be, that would be a period that they could gain that support. So that would be the remote, that's seventh grade. Eighth grade is very similar. In-person, you're looking at the four core subjects in-person, and that would be science, math, ELA, and social studies. And you would have your elective, which your elective in eighth grade, which we've talked about, is word language, but we'd also have reading or resource for students that have those interventions. And another possibility would be current events. And again, teachers would move to the team. Remote, we would have our rounds, guidance, intervention, geometry, and fine arts would be two elective choices, and then you would have another opportunity of word language, tech, and health. So this is our hybrid model, and again, it focuses in on that in-person time on science, math, ELA, and social studies. But it also includes student choice and electives, and it includes structured time for that. And that's really the last slide that you, that I, that I would need to show. So I'm going to stop sharing and exit from that, and then come back over.
So at this time, I would like to ask the chair if there are any questions.
Yep, thank you for that. And I have to, I have to honestly thank you folks for putting together such a detailed plan with the various options, the way that you have. Your work to date has been outstanding, and I thank you so much for that. I'm going to open it up to the school committee members to ask questions. So if the school committee members want to take their mics off of mute, and let's begin kind of asking the questions that we have.
Paula, this is Eric.
Sure.
So I have a couple of questions kind of related to CTE. I had a parent ask me if their child chooses to go remote, fully remote, to start, would they lose their spot in the CTE class if we were in hybrid or open?
I can answer that. You know, we fully intend to honor all students who have been accepted into the CTE program. You know, depending on which model we follow, CTE is one of the classes we hope to be able to offer in-person. If we're in a hybrid model, certainly if the whole school is remote, you know, CTE would be offered remotely then in that regards, but we do intend to honor that commitment to our students. And Elliot has been working, you know, in reviewing the guidelines from the state. They have to make some adjustments on their end. There's a requirement in terms of the number of hours CTE students have to complete, so much like the rest of the square, there'll be adjustments on that end, but we've been receiving the guidelines from the state on how to safely conduct CTE classes, and we plan on moving forward with that.
Thank you, Michaela.
You bet.
Okay. Others with questions?
Paula, I have a question. This is Laura.
Sure.
So I just wanted to get some clarification in the hybrid model about cohorts A and B are opposite each other. Cohort D is attending four days a week in-person. Would the cohort A students be with cohort D students on Mondays and Tuesdays, and cohort B students be with D students on Thursdays and Fridays? Or would it be a completely separate sort of set of classes and classrooms and groupings?
So it will depend upon the students' needs. If you recall, cohort D is primarily, well, it is for, if I'm remembering my cohorts correctly, it's for our high-need students to meet certain requirements. And so depending upon what their, for example, if a student has an IEP, it depends upon what their, their classes are. Some of their classes may, for example, be substantially separate. Others may be with other classes that are either in cohort A or cohort B, but that would be dictated by, by their particular plans.
So it could be the case that A and D students are together on Monday, Tuesday, and B and D students are together on Thursday, Friday?
Yes.
Which sort of mixed, does a little bit more mixing than keeping the A and B completely separate? Is that a fair?
Yeah. Yes, and, but the benefit still remains that we are at six feet distancing as opposed to three.
Thank you.
Chris, you had a question?
Yeah, I want to ask questions off Jim's presentation. I think Jim and Michaela did a great job of explaining, giving me a little more insight as to how things actually would function. Jim, you particularly mentioned singleton electives. I haven't heard that term before, and you highlighted a few. Would those really be not offered, so a reduction in curriculum, or are those something that we really would have to kind of try to fit in in a remote fashion?
They, so that's a good question. I mean, there's a, there's a piece of it that we'll, we'll have to, it would, let me answer it more directly, and then I can get into variations if we want. So let me be clear. We would be looking at not offering those at this time, Chris, just because, again, because if we were moving students to different spaces on the period of the schedule, I'm not explaining as well as I should. So the way I have this, the schedule structured, I have it that every period, students are now scheduled in to certain classes. They will have elective choices, but I have to have elective choices that all, that all the students that are available to those classes can take it. So for instance, in-person, and I know you just asked me about online, so in-person, where it goes by team, I would have to have an elective that one-fourth of the students that were in that team, I could put into that elective. Now remotely, I have more flexibility, so I can do a little bit more. So that's why when I said there's, there's some flexibility with some of those electives, and it depends on what model we go to. So I might be able to keep some of those, but again, it will go to which, which road we choose, and then I have to redo some course selection stuff to see what choices students have. And, you know, as always, and as I always do, is I want to try to make the student's education as engaging as possible, and a piece of that is to give them some of those choices. So I hope that answered the question, Chris.
No, it, it did. It really sounded like it would be a remote class if it fits, which is a challenge, because obviously you go remote or hybrid, we reduce the number of classes potentially. If I could, I want to sort of the same singleton question to Michaela. Is this a concern at the high school, or are we really, since we're not able to cohort and pod like we do at the middle school, that it really isn't a factor? We got to sort of, in any scenario we choose, we're going to have people going left and right and reconfiguring into different classes no matter what?
Yeah, so you know, at the high school, we don't have the team model. One of the things that we are exploring in the hybrid model is, you know, we wouldn't, right now, most of our hallways are divided by content, by subject matter, for the most part, not, not entirely, but for the most part. So we would really have to restructure and reassign rooms so that, one example, one thing that we're looking at is possibly doing it by grade levels, so that, you know, you're traveling from your history class to your English class to your science class, but it's all within the same hallway. Our electives that are singletons, you know, in the hybrid model, we most likely will not be able to run all of those same offerings that we would in a traditional school day because there's less teaching sections available. So that doesn't, that doesn't really impact our movement so much as it impacts what we can offer students.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Leslie in, and then Gordon, please.
Thanks, thank you, Madam Chair. Wow. I'm going to go take some Excedrin in a minute, but this is, this is complicated, and I just thank you all for the thought and presenting this in a way that we can try as much to get our brain wrapped around. I do note, if you're a sixth-grade parent going into seventh grade, some of this language might not be as commonplace for you, and similarly, if you have an eighth grader going into the ninth grade, it might not be as commonplace for you, so we have to just be a little sensitive to that. I am wondering, Michaela, if you can tell me a little bit more about your thinking about cohort D? So if you have a cohort D student in a, in a hybrid situation, how do you guarantee that that cohort D student won't have to repeat the same lecture just by, just by circumstance of being in school all four days? I mean, are they going to have to take the same class again?
Leslie, if it makes you feel any better, I've been through two Costco-sized bottles of Excedrin migraine in the last month. So I feel your pain.
And there's nothing funny about this. I don't mean to make light of any of this. It's very complicated.
Absolutely. So cohort D, you know, as we work to define what students fit that cohort, it's actually, it's not going to be the same for everybody in that cohort. So, you know, for our sub-separate students, or our sub-separate programs, they're essentially, you know, a program within our school, so they wouldn't necessarily be, you know, in classes with the other cohort at the same time. That doesn't mean that's the case for all of them, though, right? There is a potential for some students to qualify for cohort D, who would be in-person with cohort A Monday, Tuesday, but they may have different classes in-person on Thursday, Friday, depending on the supports that they would need in place. But it is also a potential that they would repeat those classes again, if that's something that the team decides would be beneficial to them, that repeat in learning, certainly with some differentiated instruction in place. But, you know, it's going to look different. It's going to have to really be individualized for each student that's in that cohort.
Okay, so you're assuming then that for those that are not substantially separate, if, if they were put in cohort D, that there's going to be a team meeting to decide how best their schedule might play out before they start school?
Not necessarily a team meeting. Sorry, I used the wrong term with special education, but, you know, as building principals, you know, we'll work with our guidance counselors, our teachers, you know, our staffs to really determine, you know, what's the best needs for this, for the student. Obviously, we would review the IEP and work with our sped director and our sped department chair, so that if a team meeting is needed, we would certainly have that.
Okay. And I know there are lots of things we won't be able to accomplish in, in these settings other than, you know, fully in-person, and I'd argue even fully in-person has, will have some limitations, as you all have noted. But I am wondering, one other question for you, Michaela, is do you have a sense of what those electives that might not be offered are? The only reason I ask is because I know Jim's program of study is a little bit more limited, but the number of electives that you offer at the high school is wonderfully broad, and I'm wondering if you have put any thought into, into how you're going to define that? Is it based solely on, on a subscription, or how are you going to decide?
It would be based largely on student requests, right? So if we had an elective that maybe wasn't as popular as some of our others, right, we, we wouldn't really be able to prioritize and justify, justify running that. We wouldn't really be able to prioritize and justify, justify running that if we were limited on how many sections we could cover to make sure we get all the core classes as well. So that's one component that we would take into consideration. Another would certainly be, you know, staffing and what our staffing availability might be. I think we have to acknowledge that not all of our teachers will be able to return for in-person learning. And so determining who is available for in-person versus remote would have an impact on that. And then, to be honest, it's going to be graduation requirements, right? So some of our, I'll use the math department as an example. One of the test cases that we did, you know, some of our math classes technically are electives.
Sure.
But they're electives that are, you know, rising seniors have signed up to take, and it would, but it would be their fourth year of math, which is a graduation requirement. So we have to carefully balance those needs as well.
Sure, yeah, I can understand. There are definitely some science classes that are electives at that level. And a ninth grader's schedule is a lot more tight with limited decision-making points as opposed to an 11th or a 12th grader. That's, that's for sure. And if I may, Miss, Miss Madam Chair, can I ask Mr. Dupill?
Sure, please.
Thanks, Michaela. Jim, one of my concerns is, you know, having grown up in the 70s, I will admit I was a child of the 70s, that, you know, children were tracked, right? I mean, they were set along academic tracks, and very rarely were you sort of allowed to jump over your track and to another track. And luckily, as educators, you all have moved beyond, beyond that. And so there are children who have different gifts in different areas and may struggle in other areas. And so as a result, we don't, we don't track kids anymore, which is, which is great. I'm wondering sort of how you see that. And do you see any pitfalls of what you're proposing in your teams to, and the groupings? I guess not the teams, but the groupings they're in that, that kids could be tracked again?
Bless you. No, I don't, I don't perceive that to be an issue for us. I think that there will be flexibility within the groupings.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Gordon, please?
Sure. So the easiest model to switch from is to start in full remote, is either to start in full person and go to full remote and not go to hybrid is what I thought I was hearing? Because of the scheduling differences for hybrid? Is that the same for both high school and middle school? I guess I'll ask Michaela first.
Yeah, so the models that I showed, the hybrid model can go from hybrid to full remote, hybrid to full in-person. We can kind of go on the continuum in any direction that we need to. The drawback, but I think the realization that we've all come to is, you know, no matter what model we're in this school year, it's not going to look like a typical school year, right? In terms of maybe some limited offerings and, you know, what we can or can't schedule, what we can or can't staff. But they, those can move along the continuum. Hence the Excedrin migraine.
Anything else, Gordon?
Mr. Lynch has his hand up to talk, but I just want to double check with Jim too afterwards.
I was, thank you, Gordon. I was just going to add that one consideration is if you start knowingly start full remote with a plan to go hybrid, that means that you would need to align that full remote plan to the hybrid, because the hybrid is a different seven classes than the high school would have used had it started with its original schedule. So I would just, I would just suggest that they would, we would just need an articulated plan because of the complexity of the initial remote. I would just add that detail. And I think it would be true of Mr. Dupill as well that you would need to make a consideration for what you're going to do afterward in terms of setting the schedule.
Okay, now, just to respond, I guess what I'm worried about is if we pick hybrid and the governor comes out a week before school starts, you guys are going to have to realign all the schedules again, correct?
You mean, comes out with not allowing us back in the building at all? Or saying we can go back and, you know, tightening guidelines, Gordon? Or loosening them completely is what you're saying, right?
I'm, I'm assuming loosening would be easier, tighter would, to go. I, I'm trying to weigh the options in my head of what's the best way to start off. And if we can do hybrid to start off, and if we have to transition to remote within a week, if that's, if that's going to be an easy transition, and easy, again, it's in quotations, because nothing's easy about anything to do with this year, so.
Jill, do you want to jump in on that one?
I would just add, we need to be able to transition to remote in a day. So I, I think what the principals were trying to say is that if you go from hybrid or remote to fully in-person, there would be some, there would be some indicators of that. And we could start planning for that if you wanted a more traditional school day back in place. But the, the reality is, is that we need to be able to turn in a day from hybrid to remote because of the nature of the virus.
Gordon, are you looking for Jim to add any color still?
If, if he wanted to.
Sure, so I would agree with what Ryan and Jill said, that A, the hybrid schedule does have to be able to go to distance learning within a day, and it's set up to do so. If we wanted to schedule our remote a little bit differently, if we knew we were going to be remote for the whole year, we'd do a few more tweaks to that, and we would make that adjustment, like Brian had talked about. But our hybrid is ready to become fully remote within a day, which is one of the things that Jill had really made sure and asked us to be cognizant of, and for really good reasons. Because we do have to be ready to do that in a day. So we can do that in a day. So I hope that answers your question, Gordon.
Gordon, anything else?
I have a lot more other questions, but it doesn't really have to do with this plan. So I'll hold off.
Okay. Eric, I think you wanted to ask something?
Yeah, I, I have a question, but I also have a quick comment. So I know there's a lot of questions. People are asking questions about what if this, what if that? I think what people need to remember is that we've already voted on preliminary plans. We are looking at comprehensive plans, but by no means are these implementation plans. The implementation plans, planning is going to begin after tonight. And one of the most, one of the key things that we need to do, and we discussed this in the Kingston School Committee meeting on Monday, we're going to need to meet as a, as school committees on all four school committees and our policy subcommittees to develop policies to help enforce a whole slew of new policies, including, you know, what happens when a child is continuing to refuse to wear a mask or refuse to socially distance. So there's a lot of work left to be done before we open up. But we know that, and we have the support of the MASC and other organizations to help with some sample policies. And we'll be developing those, and the principals will be developing their implementation plans. So tonight, we really need to figure out, you know, which way we're going to open up. We're not going to have all of the answers to everything. I mean, we, we're given a tight timeframe, and, and I think we're going to do the best we can. Now, having said that, the other night, I had made a comment, and I have a leaning in terms of, somewhat similar to what Gordon was just saying. My inclination is, and weighing everything back and forth quite a bit, is to open up in a remote phase for two weeks and then switch to hybrid. And I'm just throwing it out there because I think it's worth discussion. There's a lot of merits. I think it's clear that the governor, pediatricians, Desi, everybody involved in education knows that, and even our teachers know that the students need to get back to school. They need that. But we also know that the buildings are still warm in September. Folks don't, folks only know remote learning based on what they experienced last spring. And it is going to look dramatically different. I think it's going to be much more effective for the students and the teachers, given the new parameters, the new technology that we're going to be able to use. So in, I would love to get as many kids back in the school as possible who absolutely want it. I feel like we'll be able to do more for them if other people were happy with the remote instruction. I was a little bit disappointed that we didn't have as many people who wanted to opt into remote. I mean, it's a parent's choice. I'm not knocking anybody's choice. But I think if more people saw what the remote learning could look like, I think more people might opt for that. If we can get a substantial number of people opting for the remote education, in my feeling, at least at the elementary, and I know the high school and middle school's slightly different. So I'd love to get feedback from Jim and Michaela. But it seems to me if we had more people doing the remote option, it would be more likely that we would be able to let those kids who want to go back to school potentially go back full-time. We also obviously have the transportation limitations. I mean, we can only transport a third of the kids that we used to be able to. So going back, with the number of families who are choosing to go back to school in one form or another, we can't do them all at one time. There's too many students for busing, I think. I mean, we'll have to crunch those numbers, but it looks like there's too many kids. So in my mind, a hybrid would be the only thing that works. So coming back to the same conclusions that the administration had given us to begin with. They were recommending hybrid. So my only change to that would be to start off in a remote mode for two weeks, introduce the remote model, make sure we have it downright. And if we're using the same schedule in remote as we would in hybrid, then going from remote to hybrid would be very simple. They'd have the same teachers. Everything would be the same. It's just they would be doing it from home versus in school two days a week. So I think there's a lot of benefits to that. And I think I'll leave it at that, and I'll let, let somebody else ask a question. But I just wanted to throw that out there for everyone's concern, consideration. But Michaela or Jim, if you have any feedback to what I just said, I'd love to hear what you have to think.
Do either of you want to speak, or?
I, I would just maybe comment, thank you, Paula. I would comment that the schedules that we've developed are built to do just that, Eric. You know, go from remote, hybrid, hybrid, remote. The big transition obviously would be going to full in-person. And I think both Jim and I expressed that we would need a little bit of lead time for that because it does require some rescheduling and restructuring, but, but could be done.
Thank you. Laura? I'm sorry, Mike, and then Laura.
Thank you, Paula. Thanks, thank you to everyone for putting everything together. I know it's, it's been long days and nights, I'm sure, for, for all of you. So Eric had said a few things that I was already thinking, Paula, that we should use a phased-in hybrid where, where we do start with two weeks with the, with the remote. And possibly get some of the, we could have the CTE kids come in because you, we're not going to be able to do a lot remotely with, with them or anybody else that needs, needs help. The, the numbers, the numbers in all the towns right now are, are pretty low. And I think all the towns are doing a great job of that, and that's something we need to think about. That we need to keep the numbers low so we can get back fully. And I had some other questions about, you know, how the buildings, have we set the buildings up in a six-foot model already right now? And I can't remember from some of our other meetings, do we talk about portable hand washing stations in the schools? Because that's, that's going to be a big, big component. Social distancing, hand washing, keeping that six feet. I mean, I've said it a few times here and in Plumpton. Where I am, we've practiced that, that six feet since, since it's all started. And I've been in three different offices, and, and nobody's been sick, thank God. And I think that's a strong component to that, the six feet, the proper hand washing, the face coverings. I am concerned about the face coverings with the children, having them on so long. So I didn't know if there was thoughts about being able to get outside for, for some learning, weather permitting. I know we have different areas in the school where we can get the students outside. So the biggest concern I have is with the transportation. I, I think that if we, if we did see some spikes, it would, it would start from the transportation for us. They're too close together in the buses. I would suggest that if any parents that are out there that can bring their children to school, I know the ones that can't, you know, that they would appreciate that so they can get onto the bus. Anybody that can do anything to change a schedule or anything like that to, to drive, to drop off and pick up. I know we probably want to limit any carpooling, things like that nature. But if, if there's, you know, we, this is challenging times, and, and all three communities have to work together on this. And I just strongly urge that if anybody can change anything to, to drop off a student so we can limit the numbers on the bus, I would just suggest that, and thanks, I appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks, Mike. Laura?
Okay, so just a couple of things. First of all, I know that every summer, before the middle school and high school start, scheduling is one of the most challenging things that gets done. And so to have come up with all of these different plans is just amazing. And so, you know, kudos to you for coming up with all these plans while still retaining some of the stuff that's so important to our kids and our families. I wanted to comment a little bit about the survey. Eric, I heard you say, you know, you had hoped more people might want to see remote. But I just wanted to point out a couple of things. One is that families were instructed not to complete the survey. And they couldn't. I heard from a lot of families who said, I really think that we should do remote, but I, I'm not ready to commit, so I'm not filling out the survey. I also talked to a couple of people that thought that if they put remote for what they preferred, that they were committing. Even though I felt like it was worded right, there was some confusion. So I do think that, you know, if you look back at the data, it was 13, 3, 3% committed to remote learning, but only 14% said they preferred it, which really is about the same amount. So basically, anybody who said they were committing preferred it. But I think there's a lot of families who would be happy to see it, and some that wouldn't. I know, you know, we're, we're very split on this. But I do think that there were some additional families from, just from people that I talked to. You know, the one thing that jumps out to me is one of Jill's first slides, and that is where it says that the remote learning option is the safest model possible. So to me, that's, that's what I'm advocating for. I want to see us open remotely. The safety is the most important thing. And I just, I feel like, I mean, everybody's got so many reasons. And I think we've all heard from people who've got every, you know, all, all different reasons, all different ideas. Every person I talk to, I agree with, because everybody's points are so valid, even though we may have different views on this. You know, that said, with remote being the safest model possible, well, to me, that's, that's the choice. I like the idea of, you know, sort of opening remotely and seeing how things progress. I'm not sure that I would want to commit to a two-week window without some kind of benchmarks, both public health benchmarks and maybe some benchmarks about how well the, you know, the mask wearing is going and that, you know, just some kind of benchmarks where we could measure how well, you know, some kind of survey, I'm not sure exactly, but more public health benchmarks, I guess, than anything. some kind of survey, I'm not sure exactly, but more public health benchmarks, I guess, than anything else, you know, before we would decide to return in some kind of a hybrid model. So, you know, I just feel like the two weeks, that might be enough, but it might not be enough to figure out where we want to, you know, whether we consider moving back to a hybrid model. So, so I guess I don't have questions. Those were just some comments.
If you don't mind, committee, I'm going to just throw a question out there. Can I just get a little bit of a more sense or comfort level that the grading process, should we have a population of students learning remotely and a population of students in the school, is the grading process going to be equal?
Both in-person and remote will have grading and attendance expectations that are aligned with the school's expectations. So if there are any changes made to those expectations, they would be, they would be both for in-person and remote because again, remember, at any point, we may switch between them. So it would need to be consistent.
Okay.
Wait, there isn't a current special policy regarding grading that's any different than what we've used in the past. The plan was to return to our familiar process of grading and expectations for students, whether they be remote or in-person. There would be scheduled times for students, whether they are remote and in-person. And there would be attendance expectations, whether they were remote or in-person. With the exception, of course, we don't want students or staff attending school if they're sick.
Understood. Thank you. Eric, before I, I know you have another question. I just want to let Ed have the opportunity. I think he's the one committee member who hasn't asked anything yet. Ed, do you have any questions or comments that you want to share right now?
Oh, I just, safety is more important than people's inconvenience, more important than money. Safety of students and safety of the staff is my priority. Yeah, I think it should be remote and I'm not going to change my opinion. So that's it.
Okay. Eric and then Chris, please.
So my question, and this goes back to Laura. So, oh yeah, and Gordon had a question too, Paula. So Laura was asking about, you know, having some sort of benchmarks. But here's my question. So if we were to select a phased-in hybrid, I'm calling it that instead of saying remote for two weeks and then hybrid. I'm going to call it a phased-in hybrid. So if we went to a phased-in hybrid and then things started going south. Now, remember, literally in the south of this country, kids are starting school. So we're going to get a real good feeling over the next four to six weeks before we'd even be scheduled to start our remote, what is going on in other parts of the country and is also what's going on here in Massachusetts. We're going to have a much clearer picture. Things are going, could be totally different now, a month from now. If we selected this opening, could we not, before we actually open, meet as a school committee and make a decision that we are not going to open in hybrid and that we do, in fact, at that point, want to start out remote? I mean, we have that control as a school committee, not just the governor. The school committee has that authority to change our mind. Jill, do you know of any reason why we couldn't do that?
Well, my hesitation stems from the fact that every day we receive new guidance and possibly changes in expectations or legislation. So I hate to mislead you with information that I just don't have the ability to predict. What I do know is we're expected to let the state know what our plan is and how we plan to open schools. What I do know is that if we plan to open schools in person and the governor issued, you know, safety guidance that made it impossible, I know that regardless of what we voted here tonight, we wouldn't be going back in person, for example. But again, there, for this decision, they have, we have been given a lot of local authority. So if that were to continue, which I can't predict, if that were to continue, I would, I believe that you would be able to. But I cannot guarantee you that that will be the case.
That makes sense. And I know we're all talking about safety, but you know, one of the things that we need to keep in mind too is kids need to return to school. They need to see each other. I know it's not going to be the same. So kids sitting at the lunch, you know, with masks, well, not with masks, but six feet apart and then seeing each other with masks, it's not the same as it was. But there are kids who, where school is their safe haven, school is their identity, and they've lost that. They're losing sports. They're losing all of their clubs. They're losing a lot of things. So I really think, and in the beginning, I was leaning towards full remote because I just want to be safe, safe, safe. But, you know, the kid's mental health is very important too. So for me, it's, I want to get them back into school as soon as we can in a safe, measured way, and that's why I was thinking of this phased hybrid. But that's it for me. Thank you, Paula.
Oh, no, you're welcome. Chris, I think you were next, and then Gordon.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on the remote concept, both in the execution of everyone remote and in the execution of any other plan where a certain percentage of families choose remote as their choice. So in that, in that idea, my question is for Cohort D for CTE, how would we manage transportation to the school if we are 100% remote? I mean, CTE students aren't necessarily clustered in any fashion, nor are Cohort D students. But I would imagine we'd still be required to provide some sort of transportation to D students to get them in-person learning. How would we transport? Is that something we need to worry about?
We need to worry about it in terms of making sure that our bus routes are able to handle the one-third distancing that would be required to get them in regardless of the model. So they would be factors into our bus route numbers and also into our classroom numbers. So yes.
Maybe my question wasn't clear. If we're in 100% remote, but we need to get these high-need students in Cohort D into the school, and we have 100 of them, are we going to send three buses to all corners of the district and have an hour and a half bus ride from that first pickup to last pickup because they're not clustered like a normal bus route? You could have someone to pick up, you know.
If we're 100% remote, are we sending the CTE kids in?
In that circumstance, we're sending transportation for high, high-need Cohort D, but probably not CTE. Can anyone in the administration help me?
Sure. Just one thing to also remember is that if you belong to Cohort D, you're not required to attend. It would be a choice to attend. And yes, we would provide transportation. However, if we're not in school because we're not allowed to be in school, it would be a whole different story. I don't know if anyone else wanted to add anything to that, but my first, my first comments. Sorry for jumping in.
I'd like to say something to that. If anybody's paid attention to what the governor has been talking about the last couple of days, we're probably not going to be in school anyway. So that's something to be really considered. He's talking with medical experts and he's leaning towards not having us be in school anyway. So planning remote is probably the smart thing to do.
Paula, if I may.
Yep, sure. Go right ahead.
I think my question is still a little unanswered. If we choose without governor's requirement of remote, if tonight we vote on a remote platform for all students, wouldn't we still be obligated to meet the needs of Cohort D by transporting them into the school? And how would we, how would we pick up those 60 kids, 100 kids, whatever it is, from all over the place efficiently?
Just going to check that one.
That was my easy question.
Ryan? Yeah, I was, thank you. I was just going to say that, to clarify, that it's a good question because there is, in the remote learning guidance that came out on, I believe it was July 24th, it does identify efforts, even if we're identified to be in remote, just like Jill said. If it's safe enough to do so, we would still prioritize in-person learning for, there's sort of an identified group that comes out in the guidance, but it starts with some specific recommendations around services. I believe Marie Grable, our special ed director, is on the, is on this and perhaps maybe could be identified as the person to talk a little bit about what constitutes that group. But we would be able to, because we would be able to, if it's safe to do so, provide those services for our students with significant, complex needs. So that's, I just want to, and then to your point about the transportation, Chris, I'm not sure, yes, we would have to figure that out. But you are correct that we would still, even though the district is technically remote, there can still be students receiving services under, from Cohort D.
That was my understanding, and we'd have to staff that as well. But yeah, I'd love to hear Marie.
Yeah, Marie's on.
Yes, hi, thank you and good evening. I did want to comment on the transportation question. So when we're looking at our high-priority students per the DESI guidance, the first guidance that DESI gave us was to look at those students that are 75% or more receiving their instruction outside of our general education setting. So many of those students are within our substantially separate programs and many of those students have specialized transportation on their IEP. They're not generally the students that are riding the regular school bus anyway. They're usually the students that have special transportation, AKA the vans. So that takes a little bit of the population out of the question with regard to transportation. But yes, all of our students that are coming into school for our free and appropriate education, it is our responsibility to transport them. But I have heard conversation this evening about how we would love to encourage our families to personally transport our students so that we can reduce the number of students that are on the public school buses. But our particular Cohort D, that is that high-priority special needs student per their IEP, are those that are receiving services outside the general ed setting for 75% or more of their day. DESI has also identified high priority as our preschool-age students and some of our other population of students that have struggled to access remote learning for a couple of variety of reasons. Some of those reasons are for economically disadvantaged or foster care homeless and other targeted populations that they've provided in the guidance. The DESI guidance changes weekly, as we all know. So we'll be receiving more updates and hopefully some more refinement of that high-priority population. But that's the general guidance that they have published so far.
Thank you. Paula, if I can ask a follow-up, separate question?
Sure.
So, and it's on, it's still on remote. I've listened to other school committees, talked to parents in other towns, sort of read some of the data that's out there. And I understand the state is putting together a remote learning platform. I guess that might be the best word, that towns can subscribe to. I believe neighboring towns to us, Plymouth and Pembroke, are subscribing to that once the details come out, as opposed to creating in-district content for the remote learner. What details do you have on this state platform? And what would pro-cons be between using that platform that the state is authorizing and developing for a more widespread rollout versus recreating the wheel internally?
So the state just came out today with the information, so, and just today, literally. So to pretend that we're experts on quality of these programs would be silly. But I can say that they offer programs that are learning management platforms with content that are without instructional support. And they're going to offer learning management platforms that have teaching support. Obviously, you can imagine the price tag for the learning management system with instructional support is going to be more expensive than the learning management system with content. The learning management system without support, I believe, is edgenuity. And I believe we currently use that in our schools right now for some students for, who are on home hospitalization or tutoring. And I'm hoping Michaela or Jim will correct me if I'm wrong.
We use Fuel, which is like a similar company.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So in a similar concept, it would be a learning platform and you could purchase seats. You could either, you could purchase a bundle, like Core Classes, or you could purchase a particular class. So one of the ways that some school districts are using this is if they cannot offer something in person. So for example, if we had a CTE student who could not participate in person, there are learning management platforms where the district could purchase a seat in a CTE course for them to participate remotely, for example. And then you could either have our, we would either have our own staff with the learning management platform, in which case we would just have our own staff teaching remotely. Or you would opt to pay an instructor and the learning management platform. Our plan has been from the beginning to staff our remote plan with our, with our teachers and staff members. But that, that option did come out today. And some, some schools are using it sparingly as needs arise and other districts are using it as their remote plan. But it would require the purchase of, it would require the purchase of those seats in the classes. It would count as a public school. We would be the sending school, so students would still be there, special education courses through Silver Lake. So, but other than that, I, with the information that just came out today, I know a little more than that.
That's fine. Thank you.
That's a good example of why all of this is so complicated and fluid because more and more information continues to be available. Gordon, did you have some questions?
So if, if we can't fit the students back to school with the busing limitations, that pretty much means that we have to start with a hybrid model if we're going to do any in-person, correct? Just from a logistical issue at this point in time? Is that the administration's feeling, just from logistics of busing?
From the feasibility of what we've looked at, not only busing, but some of our, we would, we would go with hybrid in order to, just tell you that we believe it's feasible. Right now, we don't believe the three feet is feasible. One of the big reasons is busing. Another big reason we mentioned was spacing for six feet distancing at lunch if you have everybody returning. But those are just a couple of examples.
Okay. So that means sports are going to be out as well, correct? Because we're not going to be able to transport them as well?
So that's interesting. In the commissioner's call, the commissioner was asked the question, if you're remote, are you going to provide athletics? And the commissioner said, "If you can't go to school, you shouldn't be participating in sports." Of course not, kind of remark. And I'm not sure if I'm fairly characterizing him, but I'm doing my best paraphrasing. However, hybrid could be a different issue where you might be able to have some students participate in socially distanced ways. But we don't have guidance yet on sports. So to speculate as to what would be deemed appropriate or not appropriate would be premature because we do not have that information yet. And rightfully, And rightfully so. We need to determine academically what we can put in place for our students first before we can focus on the extracurriculars.
Just that, I, I just wanted to bring that up while we're in a public meeting, that if we can't transport the kids to school on the buses unless we have one-third capacity, we're not gonna be able to do the sports buses either at a full capacity like we normally did before.
Yes, you'd have, you'd have the same rules. So you'd, you'd need more buses or vans to get them there.
Okay. And then I had a question about the integrated preschool program. Is our decision here at Silver Lake going to be what decides what happens at that program at the Kingston building?
I, I, Marie, would you like to handle that one?
Sure. So it is an integrated program that has students from Kingston, Plimpton, and Halifax, as you know. And we will need to have a, many of our substantially separate programs also integrate students from all three communities throughout the region, whether it's the elementary, intermediate, middle school, or high school. Preschool has some different considerations and regulations to be considered. So that conversation will need to be a separate conversation. For example, we have an AM program and a PM program. So if we are talking about bringing those students back into the building, can we continue to maintain an AM and a PM? Will there be cleaning of the classrooms in between the days? Are we going to be changing their schedules at all? The preschool conversation is extremely complex and unique. So I actually have a separate group of people that, that I'm having conversations with about the reopening of our preschool program. I have Carrie Whipple, who is obviously the building principal of KES. We have Leslie Erickson, who is the added district coordinator, but also helps to coordinate the intake of our students turning three that are eligible to participate in the integrated preschool program. We also are talking to other early childhood coordinators from different school communities across the region to get a broader sense of, of how they're opening their preschool programs. We have guidance from the state level from our early childhood programming, as well as from DESI. So it's a bit of a separate conversation, but I don't think it will be solely predicated on the decision that Silver Lake School Committee makes with regard to which model you're moving toward because they do fit into the high priority group that DESI has identified. So we do need to develop a, a plan separate for our preschool population similar to the separate plan that we're creating for our other special education, high priority students.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Gordon?
No, I think I hit on two wide, different areas, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you for that. Those were actually really good answers too. Mike, and then Leslie Ann, please.
Thanks, Paul. So I, my other comments were on, with the CTE. So if we go with a, you know, we, we go with the phased-in hybrid, you know, you know, a slow, slow roll, we, wouldn't we just, we would bring these, the high-needs students back earlier? They would, they would be in, they'd be back into school, the, the one or the two weeks before we phase everybody else in, correct?
Jill, I'm sorry, you're on mute.
I'm not sure I understand the question, could you please rephrase it?
Well, if we, if we went to, we're talking about, well, I'm talking about a phased-in hybrid. So we would, we would start remotely, but we, we would phase in the CTE, the high-needs students first, correct? I mean, that's what I'm thinking. Is, is, is nobody else thinking that way, or?
I'm thinking the same way, Mike, that we would bring in, like, on the 16th, you would start the high-needs and CTE, but then on October 1st, bring in the cohort A and cohort B. That's what I was thinking.
Okay, all right.
So I have a, just a comment on that. Wouldn't we need the rego classroom teachers to be in the building to support Michaela's schedule if we did that?
It would be based upon the, what the student's schedules were, what, what staffing we would need in the building.
Does that answer the question?
Are you asking me or Gordon?
Gordon.
Well, I, I was just thinking, if you, if you're gonna bring in the CTE students early in order to support them, they're not just seeing the CTE teachers, they're seeing all the other teachers. So that's, that was my comment. And I know Jill responded, but I think I lost my connection. So if everybody else heard it, I'm, I'm okay.
Ryan?
Thank you, Paul. I just wanted to clarify that the, the state guidance identifies students with significant and complex needs as the, there's like a tiered recommendation on who's prioritized for in-person learning. And the guidance recommends those students with the complex and significant needs. I believe in Michaela's presentation, she then went down and, and talked about trying to prioritize other groups for hybrid for in-person learning, including, she mentioned CTE, potentially, maybe an AP class or something like that. But according to the guidance, when we're full remote and prioritizing kids for in-person learning, that would fall under students with significant and complex needs. So I think we have more work to do. I, I understand the desire to try to get as many students in, in the building, but I think we would have some work to do to determine if we could bring students for in-person learning that are outside the state guidance. Is just a point of clarification from what the state sent us.
And I think, Gordon, if I could just, you know, add to that, to answer your question, yes. If any students that are brought into the building, we need to provide a full schedule for those students. So if it's our hybrid model, they would need to take five classes in person. So yes, we would need, we would absolutely need to staff that.
Okay.
So, so Paul, wouldn't that, wouldn't that just, wouldn't that give us a, a, a good opportunity to, to test the waters? With everything? You know, I know, I know we, we talk about the DESI guidelines and, and we, we have to adhere to the minimum guidelines that they offer, right? So, but we need to do what's right for Silver Lake, right? So I know what DESI's saying, and we'll follow the, we'll follow what the guidelines that they've given us. But what I said in, on the Plimpton Committee was, because I live in Plimpton and I'm on that committee as well, we will do what's right for Plimpton. And we need to do what's right for Silver Lake as well, we have three towns. I mean, that's just how I feel. If, if we don't, if we don't phase in in a hybrid just to, just to get everybody acclimated of, of how the buildings are gonna be set up, what needs to be done on a daily basis, it, it's a lot. I've just, it's gonna be a lot of work. I've, I've been saying that for months to everybody. And, and you guys have been doing a lot of work, but it's, it's gonna be even, it's gonna be even more. It's gonna explode on you, the amount of stuff you're gonna have to be doing every single day in the building. As far as the sports go, goes, the, my son plays hockey, there is no hockey right now. There's no games. All there is, is they can go in and we can do some skill-based sessions. I know Mass Hockey has come up with a plan to the state to change the game of hockey. So that tells me when, when a group like that goes in and says, we're gonna change the way we play a game, they're, they're not leaning that they wanna have games. So we, we just, we need to do what's right for Silver Lake, for the students and the teachers. And a phased-in hybrid, in my opinion, is the way to go.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Leslie Ann?
Yeah, I guess I have a question. I think that what we're trying to do, I, I guess I have a comment and then a question, and then maybe a comment, and then maybe a question. And oh my gosh, this is so complicated. I guess what I fear that we're trying to do, which may not be possible, is to try to make everything as normal as possible. And I appreciate the attempt to do that. For instance, in both school situations, we're still offering the same number of periods potentially. We're trying as best our can to still offer the same program of studies, maybe with some limitations. But generally speaking, you know, not a substantially different approach. And I think the kids need that normalcy, certainly. But I'm kind of wondering if we're trying to do too much in the hybrid or the in-person. And so I guess my question is, if we vote one plan over another, are we voting on what has been presented by the two principals? Or are we voting to develop these plans further? I mean, I know we've talked about implementation plans, but for instance, I'm not so sure, as much as I respect Michaela and Jim's surgical thinking on this, of how to do this, I'm not so sure we should. I'd like to see hybrid, I'm for hybrid or in-person, I'm, I'm not for remote. I think generally speaking, remote was a giant disaster this spring. Kids haven't had contact time with their teachers since whatever it was, March 14th. I think we just need to, to get back in school somehow, some way, some part of the day for some things. But I'm not so sure that we should be doing it exactly the way we've done it in the past. So I'm wondering if we are voting on, Madam Chair, a plan that we're gonna implement that we're still gonna develop? Or are we voting on what was presented tonight? And then I have a comment after that. So I don't know who wants to answer that, I guess Jill?
Yeah, absolutely, Jill.
So we're, you, we have, you would vote on the plan, which includes the, the proposed potential schedules, recognizing that the building principals and their staff would work to develop plans based upon the reality of their staffing and student needs regarding the re-entry at that time. So again, we recognize that the principals and their staff would be responsible for their implementation plans at the building level and that there may be changes that have to take place. Perhaps it's because they need to look at prioritizing certain staff for remote learning because of health needs. Perhaps it's because they ended up with more students in remote than they anticipated. But those are building-level decisions that would be made by the principals in line with the plan. So again, I, I would also ask that we please allow our, our principals to, to work and to, to give them the time that they need to carefully consider everything that they're gonna need to put in place and for us to be able to support them in that endeavor. There is a lot of work to be done before September 16th. And we need to start doing that work. Not, not only now, but we need to start doing that work. Normally, we would be doing this work in the spring and we've given them a very tight timeline. If we keep coming up with different plans or ideas, they may never get to implementation. And, and they need to do the best they can with the resources that they have. And that's just my ask of this committee, that whatever you decide tonight, that we allow our building principals to, to continue their work with their staff to develop and build a plan that will work based upon the resources and the information they have available.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, Leslie Ann.
So Madam Chair, if I may, I would like to make a motion to support the administration's suggestion of a hybrid start to the year without a phased-in option.
Can you, can you hold that motion for a moment, just to allow one last comment? Eric had thrown his hand up in the chat. Do you mind terribly?
I'd like my motion to stay on the floor, if someone will second it. I, I'm happy to let Eric comment on, on the situation. I just wanna get something for us to discuss that's on the table.
Okay.
Is, is there a second to Leslie Ann's motion?
I'll second it.
And then your comment?
So my comment is, I was gonna make a motion. Instead of making a motion, I'm gonna make an amendment to the motion that she already made, that I amend her motion to say that we approve a phased-in hybrid approach where we start on September 16th with our high-needs cohort. And I'm gonna add CTE, although we may have to take that out. And then the rest of our cohorts, cohort A and B, would start on October 1st, which is two weeks later.
And Leslie, I think you have to accept the amendment.
And then we would vote, right, on the amendment?
Just, just, yeah, discussion and then, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, that's not my motion, so no.
Okay, so I'm, Eric, you second, well, you seconded it with a amendment. We're getting kinda complex here.
Well, he, he seconded my motion, so my motion stands on the floor. If he wants to amend the motion, he needs to get another second and then need to vote on the amendment. Then it goes back into the main motion.
I'm sorry, repeat that?
Sorry, Rob, I spent eight years under Robert's Rules of Order. So I made a motion and Eric has, has motioned an amendment to my motion. So he needs to find a second for his amendment. And then we need to vote on his amendment. And if it passes, it gets rolled into the main amendment, which was mine.
Good heavens, okay.
Correct.
Do I, does, does Eric have a, is there a second to his amendment?
Second.
So now we have discussion on the amended, on the amendment.
Can I make a comment on why I made that amendment?
Sure.
Okay, so again, we know that the buildings are, are warm in September. We also know that DESI is not allowing fans. We know that the second-floor rooms get a little bit warm. Other towns are gonna be opening up in hybrid on September 16th. We would have a chance to see what happens in those other towns that open on September 16th. We would have a chance to work with our remote learning management system for all of our students and get that right. Because we're gonna, if people think we're not gonna go remote, you're kidding yourselves, because we're gonna end up going remote at some point during the year unless there's a vaccine discovered next week. So I think it would be a good strategy to, to, to work out the kinks in our learning management system. And then that would give us time to continue to work on our reopening plans in the buildings. And that, that's it.
No, it was good clarification. And any other comments before we take a vote on the motion that's on the floor?
Yeah, so I guess maybe I'll, if, if, just to, just because I respect Eric so much, I wanna make sure I, I explain why my thoughts on, on that. I think our kids have had a lot of disruptions and they're gonna continue to have disruptions in their life. It's, I'm not suggesting that they're not. Our teachers have had a lot of disruptions, our staff has had a lot of disruptions. And I'm just very concerned that, that we're essentially asking for them to not have school for 10 more days than when our students and parents expected them to go back to school. And then they're gonna have to get adjusted to a remote learning situation for two weeks. And then we're asking them to change again to go hybrid. I just feel like, and I understand, we still always have the issue where we have to shut down because that's what the governor says, I understand that. But I agree with Mike that we have to do what's right for our own kids in Silver Lake and, and I think we need to move straight into hybrid if that's our decision. I just think, I just don't think we should tiptoe into it. Not that you're tiptoeing, Eric, you never tiptoe, you're, you're a tall guy, but, but, and I understand that there are, I think, I understand that there are, and I don't know, this is a question for Michaela maybe, but I understand that there are heating and cooling issues in our buildings that we've been trying to address for the last several years. And I'm just wondering- And I'm just wondering, maybe there's ways to adjust having kids on the second floor or the first, I don't know, whatever. I know this is way, getting way more complicated than it needs to be, but that's my explanation for why I won't vote, won't vote yes on this amendment.
Chris, do you want to comment next?
I think you had Laura teed up before me, with all respect there.
Thanks, Chris.
Somehow.
That's okay. Well, I just want to say, you know, I know we want to do what's best for Silver Lake and I believe that the safety of our kids and our staff is the most important thing. And I can't imagine opening up school, even with a hybrid model, until we have this all figured out. And I don't think we're going to get it figured out with two weeks of remote, of being remote. I feel like we need to start remote and we need to stay remote. I hear everybody saying, you know, hybrid is going to... Even if we started with hybrid, we'd have to go to remote anyway. So I can't understand why we would start with something that we know we're not going to get back to. I feel like our money and our time and the energy of our teachers would be much better spent knowing that we're starting remote, knowing that the plan is to stay remote until we know that things are safe to open back up for sure. Or, you know, if we believe that the state's going to shut down, why wouldn't we just focus on the remote model? I have a really hard time. I don't have a hard time with the hybrid model. I just think that the timing doesn't make sense. It seems very arbitrary to me. And I'm really supporting a full-remote start, only opening up to hybrid when it's safe to do so after further discussion.
So just a point of order, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Just to, just to reiterate, we're actually talking about Eric's amendment to my main motion.
Understood. Agreed. Chris, did you have, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I do, thank you. I think I understand the reason for Eric's amendment to start remote. I've heard the term "slow roll." And I think it makes some sense administratively, meaning it might be easier for the administration to start 100% remote with the kids and the students on their schedules at home. But I also think, as administrators and parents here on the call, I want to give the families choice. And every family, I think, knows or should know, there is always a remote choice.
Yeah.
And if we go fully remote, we've taken that choice away. We've taken the hybrid or the in-person choice away. Now, the full-in-person choice, as Gordon reiterated 10 minutes ago, is not really feasible from a, from a cost, from a practicality, from a safety spacing perspective. So I understand that that choice, we may need to remove from the table, from families. But I don't think we need to remove outright the remote choice from day one for the first few weeks. And part of my reasoning is, the first few weeks with kids, and I know we're not talking about K through six, but seventh graders need to see their classmates. They need to see their teacher. They need to see who's instructing them. And I don't think they get that taste, that flavor, that understanding of meeting someone face-to-face from six feet over the Zoom meetings. So I think we do need to say, this is school, this is real. We want to start hybrid if that's our choice and not wait two weeks to start hybrid. You know, we're waiting two weeks if we decide to change the calendar and utilization of the 10 extra days the governor's given us for additional preparations. I think I know enough kids and families whose kids want to get back into school, they want to learn, they want to see the building, feel the school. And I think we really should give them that choice, so that they want to go remote, it's always an option. If safety is over the mental health of seeing classmates and being able to, you know, say hi to 10 kids you haven't seen all summer, families have that choice to stay remote. So that's my, my take on it.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I'm going to allow one more comment, which is going to be Gordon, and then I'm going to ask committee for a vote on this motion.
I think Chris pretty much summed up what my thoughts were. Just, just another, you know, I see some of the comments about the classrooms and the heat and Eric's thoughts on that. We're already going to be at 50% of the students in those classrooms. I do think we need time back in the school to get back to some sort of routine where everyone's waking up and getting ready for school and going. So if we can provide that option, I think that that makes sense, because as Chris pointed out, we're already given the remote option, the full-day remote option. If, if parents and students don't feel comfortable going back, then, then they have that option.
Okay, so the motion on the floor right now includes a two-week delay in bringing in cohorts A and B, correct? That's the motion on the floor, the amended one?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, I'm going to go around the room with that. Eric?
We're just voting on the amendment, correct?
We're voting on the motion as amended, or are we voting on the amendment?
We're voting on the amendment. You're just voting on Eric's amendment to my main motion.
Okay, because you never agreed to it. Okay.
He has a second from somebody else.
Agreed.
It wasn't a friendly amendment. No offense, Eric, you're, I'm very, you're a friend.
Understood.
It was a very angry amendment.
So we're, we're voting on Eric's amendment only, which would allow the two-week gap, if you will, between the higher-needs students and the cohorts A and B. Eric, and this is, you're voting in favor?
Yes.
Okay, Eric's a yes. Gordon?
No.
Yes.
Ed?
No.
Leslie Ann?
No.
Laura?
I'm sorry, can you clarify?
Right now, you're voting...
We're voting on whether or not we want the amendment to the motion?
Correct.
Yes.
Then, then, yes. I'm not voting yes on the motion, I'm voting yes on the amendment to the motion.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Chris?
No.
I'm going to say no as well. Okay, so the motion, the amendment didn't, didn't succeed. So now we're back to the original motion.
Correct.
Correct. Which, just for clarification, let's repeat the motion.
Maybe Lisa can repeat it, if she has it. If not, I guess.
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
Okay. Support the administration's suggestion of a start with a hybrid, without, with a hybrid model without remote start. Is that correct?
It is. We don't need the remote start part at the end now that we just voted down that amendment, so it's just to...
So start with a hybrid model.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm going to go around again.
Well, Paula, I think we might need a discussion on, on, on the motion now. We just had the discussion on the amendment, am I right?
Okay.
Because I think Laura had some, had some comments that she was making, but it was more broadly against hybrid in general.
Yeah, and I apologize, Laura, it was only a procedural thing, it wasn't that I didn't like your...
No, it's, it's hard to keep track of, and I know you're an expert in that process, so apologize for speaking when it was out of turn, but...
So Laura or anybody else?
I, I will just make the comment again that I, I think that safety of students and staff needs to be paramount and I think we need to start remotely.
Okay, is there any more discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none?
I have a question, Paula.
Go ahead.
Paula has a question. As Jill sort of indicated, whatever platform we decide to go with tonight, it sounds like the building, Michaela and Jim, have control over scheduling. I'm wondering if there's any other comments and concerns with that scheduling, considering, I'm a little concerned with singletons, quite frankly, and how that is going to work if we approve a plan for, for tonight, that they would sort of have that authority to either include or not include some of these singleton-type classes. My personal safety preference is more aligned with what Jim's doing, which is very, very hard and probably impossible for Michaela to do, of pods and sub-pods, I guess. But it is that singleton risk that I want to, for the committee to think about prior to necessarily voting right now or raise awareness of it.
Chris, how do you think it'll impact? When you say think about it, what do you, can you just expand more on what's on the floor?
Well, I think if we're going to the remote, there's a discussion right now, we're looking at remote as an option. And we have kids in school two days a week under this plan. Do we want to make it that five-class schedule, I guess, for Cohort A on Monday, Tuesday, and really let them double down almost on core classes? Which then sort of pushes aside these singletons or, I guess, less critical electives, I'll call them, without knowing what's a better term for them. And those classes end up coming in on the remote days. I don't know if the remote days only for some of these singleton classes is going to be effective with two separate cohorts. Because if you're, if you have one class of, a subject with 20 kids, you may have 10 of them remote on Friday and 10 of them remote on Monday, but that teacher now teaches two separate classes versus all of them being remote at once. And I'm wondering how the efficiency of that fits in when we really are stuck with some of these singletons like, like Jim is talking about and so forth. And that's why I'm trying to figure out, should we really have a conversation about curriculum and pulling in some of the reins to make sure the core delivery of math is, in a hybrid model, 100% meeting the math standards, knowing that we may be giving up some of that learning pace potentially by having the remote learning? Does that make sense or confuse everyone? Silent.
No.
Go, go ahead, Michaela.
I think I know what you're, what you're trying to ask, Chris, so I'll, I'll try to answer it and if I don't, then disregard. In the hybrid model, which can fluctuate from hybrid in-person to fully remote, the schedule that we're proposing, teachers, whether they're in-person, whether classes are in-person or remote, are teaching four sections a day, right? Students will attend seven, but teachers are only teaching four. In a traditional school year, our teachers teach five. So by splitting our schedule in order to balance both in-person and remote, we are automatically going to have to limit how many classes we can run, which, one of the impacts is those singleton electives. So there are, there's a very good chance some of those, if not all, would be able to run under, under those parameters of that schedule. Does that answer your question? Whereas if we were, if it was last March, right, and, you know, we could all go back in time in our time machine and, you know, we shifted from fully in-person to fully remote with synchronous learning for all of our classes still, right? You would be able to run your same schedule.
Right. I think that's my point. And I think from a core education thought, I mean, core meaning, what are we doing as a school committee to educate kids? The focus sort of needs to be those graduation requirements, the math skills when they take their SAT either this year or next year, their, their math learning as a freshman, so that they're successfully getting to a sophomore-level curriculum. Because I think as we, as we start this year and you look at your, your freshmen coming in, they probably didn't cover 100% in eighth grade because of the situation of going remote in March. So freshman math, whatever that might be for you, you may be starting two months behind where you normally would start in eighth grade in eight months. And I think that's my question, to make up that gap and not lose any of it by being half-remote, because I think the remote delivery is, is less than 100%. And I'm going by, by, by what I hear from, from teachers and leaders, that in-person is the 100% learning best method, anything else is some percentage of that. So I think you did answer my question and I'm just, I was kind of curious how that scheduling would fit and if we should get clarification from you as a committee, if anyone else has any questions on that. That was all. Thank you.
I just, did Jill, I apologize, hold on one second. Jill, did you want to make a further comment there?
No, I think Michaela did a great job explaining, but I'm happy to, to try to answer any other questions. On any, on any given year, the reality is that sometimes we could have courses that were under-prescribed and may not run. And that would, that would occur at the, at the building level, obviously, you know, that's the, that's the power of course selection and to some degree. Those decisions sometimes have to be made. What's difficult here is that because we don't know the number of remote and the number of in-person, we need to provide our principals with the flexibility to be able to make a viable schedule to provide the greatest amount of diversity and opportunity for our students. And I think Michaela did a nice job of describing earlier some of the factors that would go into that, such as, you know, if something was under-prescribed or if something was needed in order to meet a graduation requirement. A, a, a schedule, a schedule is a complicated thing and the more singletons you add, the more, and by singletons, for those who, for you are familiar with that term, it's a class that's only offered once in a schedule. And that's what makes it more complicated in your scheduling matrix, because wherever it falls, it's going to run in conflict with potentially another course that's being offered. So this happens every year. Sometimes students are unable to get into a course because a course is only offered once and perhaps it's even up against another singleton course. These are difficult and frustrating and building principals and guidance counselors do the best they can to try to address those issues. When you talk about a remote and in-person, you're taking your staff and you're, you're putting added stressors on that potential schedule, because now you've, you've created a role for these people. So yes, there, there will be conflicts and things that, as, as Jim mentioned, that he's not, he's already anticipating he won't be able to offer, he's going to have to offer something that will be able to accommodate more students so that the schedule will work. But these are things that they need to work on sooner rather than later, because we're going to be starting school soon, whether it be in-person or remote.
Thank you for that. I think Gordon, I think you were next, then Eric, and I may have then heard Ed say something. I'm going to say Gordon first, please.
Are there any changes to our graduation requirements that would allow you more flexibility in the scheduling for any of the models? Is there something that the school committee could change to open up an easier schedule for you guys?
I would recommend that if in fact, that those kinds of changes have to take place because of circumstances beyond our control, that we, we revisit that policy with the, with the actual facts as opposed to diminishing our graduation requirements prematurely. But obviously, we don't want to hold our students accountable for something that they were not able to take. That wouldn't, that wouldn't be fair, that wouldn't be just. So I, I think I can say with confidence that, that if we found ourselves in that predicament, we would be coming to you asking for a change...
we would be coming to you asking for a change in that policy in terms of graduation requirements, and providing you with an explanation as to why we weren't able to provide that for students. And we're going to know that very shortly, as soon as these schedules are built and staffed. But again, things could also change. We don't know what could happen with the virus, and so we'll have a pretty good idea once the schedules are staffed. But I have to emphasize the potential need to revisit and to be flexible based upon new realities that enter into our educational system this year.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
So one of my concerns that I've outlined before is busing, transportation, which was one of the reasons why I wanted folks to test-drive the remote, because hopefully more people would stay with remote. So if we only have 7% of our students opting for remote, that means we need to transport 93% of our students. Now, we could do so in, if we split them up into two groups, then we've got about 46.5%. Our buses can only handle 33% under state guidelines. So we need to come up with 50% more capacity for buses. How's that going to happen? I mean, I know some people, we don't really know the numbers, so I'm super concerned about voting for a plan where our transportation budget could be blown up. We've heard numbers before from the district on the cost for 90 days, but what if we keep doing this for the remainder of the year? So that's a lot more than 90 days. So the next question, so that's a statement, I don't know that there's a question in there, but that's a huge concern of mine. Can we put out, I hate to do surveys, but at what point do we ask the parents to commit to the busing? We know that a lot of people didn't fill out the survey because they had no idea what our plan was. If we vote a plan tonight, then they'll know, and then we might have more people picking remote, or more people committing to driving their kids to school. But that's a huge variable to me that I'm just super concerned about, and I'm wondering how we can mitigate that risk. I don't know if Jill has any thoughts.
So we have the ability to keep the commitment forms open, the link that was sent to parents, and parents who, after knowing what the plan is, are now ready to commit, could then fill out the forms. But what we need to do is set a deadline so that our principals can build the schedule with a certain degree of confidence to the best of our ability. That will be important. So again, we have the ability to continue to collect commitment forms.
And the commitment is for the year, Jill, correct? That's what we talked about before, for the semester.
We had asked for a semester commitment, I believe, for buses, if I recall. And I want to say that we did the same for the educational model, but again, I apologize, it's getting, my memory is getting cloudy at this hour, I'm sorry. It's been a long march, as we like to say. It's our new expression. So I apologize that it's just escaped me right now, but I'm pretty sure we went with the semester because of the difficulty in scheduling, and we went for both best busing and for teaching and learning. But the reality is, is that if in fact we had spacing, and we could do it safely, and someone wanted to transition from a remote to in-person, we would do our best to try to accommodate that request. At any point, we're going to need to be able to provide remote learning, although we're looking for a commitment to help us to anticipate our staffing needs. But we could have children that couldn't come to school because they need to quarantine, in which case we need to provide services to them. We know that parents can't anticipate that, so.
Yeah, perfect. Eric, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
No, you're welcome. Ed, I think you wanted to say something?
Yeah. This COVID has a 1% mortality rate. So are you guys going to be able, if we go back, are you guys going to be able to live with 35 of our students or teachers dying?
Ed, I think that is a very unfair thing to say.
I don't think so. I don't think so, because there are...
It's not 1% of the population is dying, that is not true.
No.
That's a little bit too much drama. Ed, knock it off.
And Leslie Ann, I think you wanted to make one final comment.
Yep. So if you go back and look at Jill's, or the survey results, I shouldn't say they're Jill's survey results, and Laura, I call on you because you're our survey expert on our school committee, our data geek, although I'm right behind you. If we look at the pie chart, it says that of the respondents, 56% of the middle school and high school population said that they would send, they would not choose transportation, I mean, they would opt out of transportation. So granted, that's, would you say, 66% respondent response rate? So 56% of that 66% said that they would opt out theoretically. Laura, correct me if I'm wrong. That trend may continue if we got 100% coverage, 100% respondents. I mean, that's an assumption, but let's just go with it for the time being. So if 93% of the students would need to be bused, and 56% of them say that they're going to opt out, so now we're down to, let's just cut it in half instead of 56, let's just say 45%. And we split that up into two days, into hybrid, we actually have enough transportation to cover those needs. And to be honest, my motion would be different if it wasn't for transportation needs. My motion would have been 100% in-person back in school. But I understand we have a transportation issue potentially, although the numbers don't seem to bear that out yet, but that being said, I'm willing to go with that, let's just say, compromise. So I would like to call the question.
You'd like to call the question?
Question called. The motion.
Oh, the motion, okay. That was my intent after your comment. All righty, folks, I'm going to do a roll call. We're voting on the motion of beginning school with the hybrid model, as outlined in the document administration has put together for us, along with the working group. I'll start with you. Yep?
I have a question, since we are one member short. What, I'm concerned, it's going to be real tight here. Can Lisa confirm what we need?
We need a majority. This isn't a two-thirds vote.
That's what I'm asking, but we're also one member short, so we're a vote short, I think, of what we typically have as a full committee? I don't know which it's based on.
We have 15 possible votes, right? So we need at least eight.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Thank you, Paula. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, no worries. I'd rather get it right the first time. Eric, you're always my first to pick on for the vote.
Well, since Leslie Ann said that my amendment wasn't friendly, I'm going to give her an unfriendly yes on this.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Yeah.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
Mike?
No.
Ed?
No.
Gordon?
Yes.
And that leaves just me, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
I'm a yes. So it passes. All righty, folks, I want to thank everybody. Again, this has been so complex, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse. We've talked about how diverse the opinions are, and how difficult this has been, it's going to continue to be difficult. I appreciate everybody's efforts and thoughts, and tremendous thoughtfulness in this. It's impossible to make everybody involved and impacted, happy by any decision we could possibly make. We just have to make the best one, given the circumstances and the data and the information we have, and at any given time, and go on from there. And again, I cannot thank everybody enough for your dedication and your time up until now. With that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to, oh, we have to vote the calendar. Okay. If folks have had a chance to look at the draft calendar, if they're in agreement, if I could have a motion, or any discussion you want on the calendar.
I'm sorry, I have not seen it. Is there, was it attached to something? I'm sure, Lisa, it was, and I apologize, but I don't think I remember seeing it.
It was, go ahead, Jill. Email, and then reattached to the email that was sent later on with the presentation? There's a proposed, and then the one that was voted.
So the current calendar has a school year start of September 2nd. The proposed calendar, and the original calendar was a school start on September 2nd, and the newly proposed calendar would incorporate days of training per the commissioner towards safety training. If we started on September 2nd and started by September 16th, I believe that would give us nine days of training. Some may ask, well, what about that 10th day? We can't start after September 16th, and the days must be used in advance of the school year. So I'm asking for your consideration in a vote of a calendar that would afford us the ability to provide those training days for staff, to make sure that we do everything we can to put in safety measures.
I do have one question on the calendar, and if I may, Madam Chair, I'm curious, I'm just looking at it now, and I'm wondering, so that would be in training September 1st through 4th, that's the four days you're talking about, correct? And then training, the 7th is Labor Day, so that wouldn't be a training day, correct? So you're really, you're doing 8 through 11, so eight days?
So if you start on this, I'm sorry, I don't have the calendar in front of me, I'll call it up.
Oh, I see what you're doing, you have the 14th.
Right, right.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, that is 10 days, isn't it?
I think it is.
Yeah, because it's the 1st and the 4th is four days, the 8th through the 11th is...
It is 10 days.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were doing here.
I thought that we start at school on the 2nd in the original calendar, am I mistaken?
No, you're right. So the calendar below says, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if this is okay, the calendar below says September 1 to 15, and service day for teachers, but I think what you really mean is 2 to 15, correct? September 2 to 15, because that would have been our original start date?
I think what happened is, what's getting incorporated is the days that we would have had anyways prior to the start of the school year, and I'm counting the days from the start of the student's year. So we already have professional development days incorporated into our calendar, so our additional days don't actually start until September 2nd.
Okay, okay, thanks. No, that's okay, just wanted to make sure I understood.
No problem. Then Mike, do you have a comment on the calendar?
Yes, I was wondering, looking at the calendar, why don't, what, the early days, why don't we have the early days moved into Wednesday, which would be the remote days, right? Remote day?
You're suggesting the early release days on the calendar get moved to Wednesdays?
Yeah. I just, just wanted to talk about that.
That's a good idea.
Want I make a comment?
Sure.
The early release days usually wrap around parent conferences and such, so some of the early release days wouldn't be able to be moved, I don't believe, depending on what ends up happening in the future of the school year.
Michaela and Jim, do you see any problem with moving any of our half-days to Wednesdays? No, I think that would be fine. I guess the bigger question is how it impacts the elementary schools, and they're not... Right, I don't want to speak for everybody else, I think for the high school...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
...it's flexible, but I don't want to speak for my colleagues at other schools.
What's your timeframe to vote this? Does that be voted tonight?
No.
Okay. Does it make sense to investigate that suggestion and revisit it?
I think it does.
Okay.
Could we discuss it at our not-expected other business for tomorrow with our other...
Well, that actually depends on if we need the meeting for Silver Lake for tomorrow.
Could we at least vote the start date, even if we're not voting the calendar?
That's a good point.
Just so that folks know that for sure, because I know a lot of people are waiting for that information. And that's really the more critical thing right now, I think.
We can change the half-days later.
Okay, agreed. Chris, before we try and get a motion, did you still have a comment on the calendar?
I do, thank you, yeah. One of them was the half-day movements, clearly, but I also think we should probably start with students on the 14th. If we're going to remote hybrid, let's not start in a broken week, please. We can't start the 21st, but we start the 14th. And my question would be, can we back up the 10 additional professional days plus three that they already usually have scheduled from the 11th going backwards into August?
Well, that's an interesting question, because the commissioner has made an agreement with the MTA, but the school committee has the authority to vote the calendar. And I'm not sure, my additional concern is, are you, you're also saying that we would have fewer days for training for safety and preparation for this new model? If I'm understanding...
No, my thought is, let's maximize the 10 days from the amendment from the MTA and DECE and so forth, and we usually have three days before school starts for teachers, correct?
Yeah, but I would want to check our contractual language in terms of start days for teachers, so we have three days prior to the start.
Yes, I'm saying, I'm saying take 10 professional development days that were being offered, 11, 10, 9, 8, that's four, the full week before that is five, the Friday in August the 28th would be those 10 days, and then take the usual three we typically have for teachers, asking teachers to come in on the 25th, give them their full 13 days to prep, and then we start on a regular full week, Monday the 14th. Is that contractually an option we have? I don't want to start on the 16th, but I don't want to take two days away from the teachers and start the 14th. I want to still have them have those days. So that just backs us up a couple days, I guess.
I can't imagine changing the start date for teachers at this point. I don't think that really would be fair, whether it's contractual or not.
I guess I also think that this is going to, I mean, I agree with you, Chris, it would be ideal if we started on Mondays, on a Monday, but we actually, we never start on a Monday. We start on a Wednesday, so it's going to be all-new regardless, so I mean, I get your affinity for starting on a Monday, but...
But it's kind of nice to have that phase, the phase-in time is kind of nice to have. I feel like whenever we start on a Wednesday, it's, the phase-in time is good, so I feel like three days is a good way to start, personally.
But it wouldn't be phasing in Cohort A, they would be remote.
That's true.
That's my point. And starting on a Wednesday, everyone starts synchronous on... So, and starting on a Wednesday, everyone starts synchronous online. Then, Cohort B comes in Thursday, Friday. Then, you have the weekend, and then Cohort A comes in. I think with students only being there at a maximum two days, let's try and schedule it for a Monday start, for fairness.
Or could, could kids come one day that week? The first week? Find a way to switch it up just a little bit so that A comes and B comes, and then, there's a day or something? Now, we're getting complicated.
Why do we want to be different from everybody else? Everybody else is starting on the 16th.
I just, I just think we're giving it maybe a little more thought.
We voted it in Kingston.
That's fair for Kingston.
Yeah, but do we want to have a conversation? Do we want to be on different schedules?
Well, I think when we look at the calendar going forward, why would we want two breaks in February and April for people to travel twice out of state if we're in COVID problem times, though? I think I'd advocate very strong two weeks in March. So, that's why I think the calendar, I don't mind approving the calendar tonight for a start date, but I think the 28th as a half-day on a Monday probably should be moved as our other days.
Chris, I'm going to let Gordon jump in with his comment. He's got his hand up, if you don't mind.
Seeing that Wednesday is the remote day throughout the district, are we going to use that day to hand out materials to the students that are starting remote the next day? Are we going to give out Chromebooks that day? Or are we going to wait for the students to come in in order to get the Chromebooks? So, they, those students wouldn't actually start until, until the Monday. I, this is more of a logistical question about getting the materials to the students, I guess.
Jill?
We could work with staff to, to consider Chromebook deployment for those students who would not be entering in person, similar to the way that we issued Chromebook deployment with the emergency closure.
One other comment. If we were going to look at it as the Cohorts A shows up on, if we move the opening to a Tuesday, Cohort A shows up on Tuesday, we give them the materials, you have the remote day Wednesday, then you have Cohort B shows up on Thursday. Can we take that Friday as a professional development day? Or do you have to use all 10 days before the start?
Right, you have to use all 10 days before the start. Otherwise, they don't count.
Okay, okay.
If you don't use them, you lose them. They don't, they don't count as your 170 days.
All right, where do we go from here?
I like what Chris is thinking, Madam Chair. I mean, I do, I'd love to get a Cohorts in for two days in the remote, and then, you know, because I understand that sort of issue. But I, I do think starting on a Wednesday is also an interesting idea, because, you know, to your point, starting the 16th would allow, I mean, to Gordon's point, it would allow some phase-in time for Chromebooks and, you know, class expectations and things like that, all in remote fashion. I don't know. But I do agree with Chris that we should, I mean, with, I don't know, Laura, that we should just vote a start date. And I feel like we should come back and revisit the calendar, because I do think there are a lot of adjustments we might want to make, half-days, vacation weeks. I just think I'd like to add up how many days an A person's going to be in class versus how many days a B person's going to be in class, and I haven't done that. So, I guess I would, I don't know if there's a motion on the floor, but I guess I'm some of the motion lady lately. Do you mind if I make a motion just to vote on the calendar, specific to the start date only? The modification to the start date only to September 16th?
I'll second that.
I have a question.
Sure.
Kingston already voted it. Is there anything wrong with voting the calendar and then just voting the whole calendar, not just the start date, and then opening it up later to make adjustments? Because we'll have to do the same in Kingston.
Yeah, we don't, as a rule, we don't like to do that, because we'd like people to be able to set their schedule. But under the circumstances, it was necessary. And now that you have voted a plan, it will require further consideration of the calendar. So, it's not ideal, but nothing that we are doing is ideal. But the sooner we can at least give people a start and date to their calendar.
So, my question is, should we just vote on the calendar as it is and then open it up and vote on an adjusted calendar later, rather than just voting on the start date tonight? That was my question.
I think it's important to signal the folks that we're solid on a start date, and we need to consider other adjustments to the calendar. We're going to do that very soon.
Okay, so, we can't post that calendar until we vote the whole calendar then?
Well, we voted the calendar in the spring, so all we would do is making this change, this one change, right?
Oh, well, that's what I'm saying. So, you're voting the calendar, not just the start date.
We already voted, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your motion. I thought you were only voting on a start date.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Eric, I'm just voting. My motion was to adjust the calendar specific to the start date.
Sorry, I'm misunderstanding, my brain is fried.
I know, Eric, I was on the same page as you, so don't worry about it.
And I was too, and I seconded it, but I'll second it anyway.
Sorry, I was wrong.
Sorry.
Okay, so, any other comments to this motion, or can we take a vote? All righty, Eric?
Yes.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Chris?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Laura?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. With no further business, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
May I ask a question first?
Sure.
Is Silver Lake...
Do you want to change the date of our adjournment? Sorry, go ahead, Gordon, I'm slap happy, too.
Are we in agreement? We don't need to meet tomorrow with Silver Lake?
I don't see the need for us to meet tomorrow.
You can come and watch.
I, I, I may. I believe that there is no need for a meeting tomorrow night. I think we concluded our business this evening. Jill?
Jill's got you though.
I just want to make sure that you have included language, and again, I apologize, that of the approval of the plan. I had, so, for example, let's...
Yeah, my motion didn't cover approval of the plan, so that's a good point. I did, my motion did cover approving your recommendation. So, I guess one could imply that would be the plan, but if you need an explicit motion, I'm happy to make it.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather be safe than sorry, I think.
All right, so...
And it was that language, I think, Jill.
Yes. Did you want me to find that language?
Do you want, if you could?
Eric, I'm stepping on your half-motion, sorry. But I, should we complete this business first?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, sorry. I'm like, what motion? Tired.
I'm looking, I'm sorry, I sent it to Paula, but I don't have it at the top of my inbox. At least, I thought I did.
No, I did see it, and I have to tell you, I apologize. I just, I wasn't even thinking about it being a specific language. Okay, I think I have it. Now, I worry. I'm going to make a motion to vote to approve the fall reopening overview as presented with the understanding that the situation is fluid and changes to the plan are likely. That is the language.
Second your motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Laura?
No.
Ed?
No.
Mike?
No.
And I was a yes. Did I miss anybody?
No.
Okay. Now, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you, folks. I'll talk to you soon. Good luck tomorrow night, anybody who is on another committee.